On here, we've got a full agenda and Ron just left, so. Folks, I'd like to suggest on the agenda that we switch the items two and three up to number one. I think they're not going to take long and I think we had to get those wrapped up and so we can spend most of our time on the meeting agenda review if that's okay with everyone.
That's fine.
Okay, yep.
I'll make a motion to change the agenda to move item one down to the bottom. We can't, can we? So we'll just do.
No, no, you're saying you're gonna make a motion. Yeah, somebody will make a motion.
Hey Reggie. So let's call the work session to order. Is there a motion to on the agenda?
Oh, we make a motion to move item number one to the last, to the bottom of the agenda?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Ron, the two items now that are up or have to do update on the bylaws and the second item is the update on the training sessions. Could you give us a brief updates on those? I don't think those are going to require action.
That's right.
We do want to understand what we are on those.
All right, can everyone hear me? Great, okay. All right, so from our last meeting, it was asked of the staff to supply multiple different versions of the updates that we spoke about in the last meeting. And I did that. I supplied you, I have a clean version here, I have a red line version and of the new changes and also a red line version of all the other changes that we've had up until these new changes. So I had that for you and I also have a clean copy and a red line copy of the public hearing procedures. There's two different ones. There's ones for variances and special exceptions and there's one for rezonings as well. So there's clean copies and red lines of that as well. So I'll have these passed down. These is gonna be five different things.
Oh, let's see. The bifocals.
Other changes.
So again, my suggestion is we do not address these substantively today, but we
Take a moment and study.
At a future meeting.
Okay.
That's okay with everybody?
Gotcha.
I think we have plenty else on our agenda.
Just one part study or study? Okay.
Yeah. Same thing, one.
They're the same thing?
There's.
Blue line or red?
Just one.
You know, I think there might be a clip for each one of us.
Yeah.
Big one.
So. Ron, is that it on the distributions?
So that's it for for these distributions. Just give, I guess for the future, I guess for the staff, if you can just let us know what your thoughts are and I'm sure we'll talk about it at another meeting. Now, as far as the other item that we had as far as scheduling group training, so we have reached out to Chrissy Marlowe with UGA and Carl Vincent Institute and we're, we have a couple of dates that they've supplied us with. We've also reached out to South Fulton and Palmetto as well to see if they would like to join in on a group training exercise, but we haven't heard back from them just yet. So the dates that I have for you here, and I'll send these out via email as well to the group, but September 10th, September 11th are the two dates in September that we can choose from and a host of dates in October, October 16th, the 17th, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 28th, or the 29th. So it's a one day class. It lasts most of the day. It's the Planning 101, Planning and Zoning 101 class that they provide annually.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to the meeting agenda items. Okay. The order of business now is we're going to go through a meeting agenda review and the first item on the meeting agenda is the recommendation on an ordinance to revise and amend. And by the way, this is a working session discussion and this will come back for action at the, at the actual regular meeting at seven. Recommendation on an ordinance to revise and amend Appendix A, City of Chattahoochee Hills, UDC, and for all of the related purposes. Mike, do you want to? No, we're going through the, we'll do that. We're just going through the agenda items, the substantive ones. Mike, do you want to talk just a little bit about the process? I mean, that's been going on for a year.
Right, this has been going on for?
Sure, sure, that's okay. Susan, please.
Good evening. I'm Shannon Kettering. I'm with Kettering Plus Planning and Facilitation. I've met a few of you the last time we presented and Robert Reed is with me today. I just wanted to take a moment to recap the purpose and the process of the UDC text amendment as, like you said, it's been many months since we last presented and there's also a few of you that are new to the commission. Our team was asked to facilitate a planning retreat for the commission and the city council in March of last year. And during that retreat, several inconsistencies and just concerns came up regarding the UDC. And I think the impetus for that was both lessons learned from the past few years as well as just a general goal to better align the UDC with your city's vision. During that retreat, eight topic areas came about and were identified, I should say, based on all of the responses from the retreat members. And so we took those responses and organized them into those eight topic areas. And then we presented those topic areas to the council and received their approval last summer. We then moved forward in the summer and the fall with refining the code based on those eight topic areas. We presented the proposed text amendment to you all in September of last year and you all proposed to recommend the amendment with four conditions. And I'm just going to briefly discuss those four conditions. Three of those were regulatory and one of those was procedural. So the first addressed section 11-6, family lots, and requested that no change occur regarding the number of lots allowed. The second was the procedural request that the 20 acre lot size minimum be a part of the next scheduled comprehensive plan update. The third requested that the proof of the DTC requirement mentioned in section 6-3 be incorporated into the table in section 4-10. And then the fourth condition addressed section 6-2 and requested an adjustment to the distance of disconnected lots in the hamlet clustering requirements. These four conditions were then incorporated into the proposed amendment and we presented that amendment to council in October of last year. Unfortunately, the council did not support that amendment and stated that the revisions were a bit complex and they wanted to better comprehend them. And so they wanted us to slow down the process altogether. So that's what we did. And then we were re-engaged in January. And then in February, we created a rationale document. And I believe you all have that rationale document in your packet.
Yes.
And that rationale document essentially goes line by line through all the recommendations and provides a reason or an explanation for why each recommendation occurred. Then we held four joint council and commission work sessions. So in March and April, we went over this rationale document and I know many of you were present for that. And then we received a letter from council member Lightsey outlining a number of questions regarding the amendment. And so we held two more joint council-commission work sessions in May and June. And we went through each of those questions, item by item, and provided our response as well as our recommendation. So out of those four work sessions, there are nine modifications to the proposed text amendment. Those nine modifications are in the document you have now and that's what I'll go over with you in a moment. But before I do so, I do just want to clarify that the document that you recommended approval to in September and the document you have before you today just has the difference of those nine modifications. And also I want to mention that at no time did this process create less strict or looser recommendations. To the contrary, this code is very thoughtful, but more importantly, effective with regards to strengthening the code's goal to really meet the city's vision of rural preservation with balanced growth. So the amendment that you have before you has several colors. The black text is the unchanged text.
Susan, give me, give me just a moment.
Okay.
Is it the will of the commission to hear the description of the changes or have you been able to understand and see them on the red line?
I'm good.
I mean, this has been on the table now for a long, long time. And there is both the clean version in the packet
Right.
and the red line version that includes the recommendation. I have one question about it, but it really is the will of the council. I think you're prepared, you're prepared to go through the changes, but I'm not sure that's necessary. If, any thoughts on that?
Well, I can at least clarify that the red are the revisions that we provided to you and presented in September that you recommended approval for. And then the blue text are the nine modifications. So just to be clear on what you're really looking at, it's the blue text is the nine modifications. And sure, I can go through them or we can do them as people have questions.
Well, I know that this has been before the city council and the, and the council or the commission members that attended in some depth at this point, and we've gone through this a few times. So I don't want to, we have a a rather full agenda, so I don't want to do this unnecessarily, but if, if the will of the commission is to do that, that's fine. Any thoughts?
I have no questions.
I have no question.
No questions, no question. I have one.
Okay.
On section, on page two, on section D1, I believe at the last work session, it still refers to 9% preservation. And that is, was, is, was your recommendation.
That is correct.
I believe at the last work session, it was the, it was the, it was, my sense of it was that there was unanimity about moving that up to 15%. And, and so is, do other people remember that way, Ron? Is that what your memory of it is? Commissioner or council member Schmidt wanted was talked about a 20%. And then I think Commissioner Lightsey was thinking 14% and it ended at 15, I think. And I thought that was the consensus view of the city council members. But it doesn't, doesn't mean.
I don't often use the term consensus for, for when they talk like that in the work session. So we didn't get that.
I viewed it as consensus. I viewed that everybody was nodding in an agreement, but I think it's fine to present it this way, but it is, it's, I think it would be appropriate for the commission if it's so inclined to recognize that 15% was in fact a proposal that was made and I think got positive, positive feedback from the city council.
Shannon, did that have to do with saying that that could be the preserved buffers, that amount in the buffer?
The 9% is how we came up with the 9%. And so I apologize, I just remembered it as they would ask for us to write an amendment and no one has reached out to us.
No, no, that's, I think that's right. And so I think going in front of the council, I think it would be appropriate for our comment on this to make reference to that.
Okay.
So, but that's my only question on it. That's my only question. Will, from your standpoint?
I did have one question going through it. And you can answer it now if you can or during the main meeting is fine. The two tables, unit size equivalency, block net density equivalency.
Sure.
The block net density includes footnotes that require externally sourced TDRs or DTCs under certain situations, but the other table doesn't.
Correct.
And just was looking for understanding on the difference of why you.
Sure. So the unit size equivalency table is unchanged. So that's already a part of your code. And so we actually created the block net density equivalency specifically to become more of a demand generator for your TDR DTC program because we have heard feedback that that program is not as workable as is hoped. And so what this does is it, if some developer chooses to use the block net density, then 50% of their units have to look to preservation external to the site, which really starts to get more at your goal of more land preservation that benefits more of the community, not just the individuals within that proposed development. So it's just an option that goes with block net density.
Okay, so it just, it wouldn't be advantageous to have that also applied to unit size equivalency?
That's just not how we proposed it.
Okay.
So that way you would always have the unit size equivalency as one option and block net density as another.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I'll, I'll just add, the unit size was included originally. It was in, it's been there for a long time. Was, was included to encourage a variety of housing types rather than a developer trying to maximize every entitlement that they got, right? They could use those entitlements and maybe make the same profit or very close to it by providing more variety of housing. And so adding any additional friction in that, in that process, you might not get the housing variety you're looking for. That would be one, one reason.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. No other questions then, Will, is that?
Yeah, no.
Okay, no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Miss Kettering, appreciate it. And we won't, we aren't taking action on items during the working session, but appreciate it. The second item is the on the agenda for a public hearing is a recommendation on an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone 78, 7,848 and 20.25 acres to, from RL to mixed hamlet for DMB development on behalf of several owners of the property. This is otherwise known as the Buchart property, commonly known as that. And so I think our purpose here is now to talk about our thoughts on what we think about the rezoning and our proposal. And we have representatives of the applicant here to answer questions and hopefully at the, at the public hearing as well. So I think this is for purposes of discussion. I do want to compliment the applicant on a very thorough package. It's very thorough. It checks off quite a few boxes in terms of the, in terms of the submittals that are required. There are some interesting submittals in there. And also for the public outreach, I think this, I'm not sure I've seen public outreach to this extent on any project. I may be wrong, but this was pretty extensive public outreach. So I mean, let's, let's start. Lori, would you like to start?
Okay, so I have a few questions. And I've gone by the planning areas and in the east planning area, there's an option for the parcel up there by Campbellton, which under the zoning would require buffers and there's no buffers in the concept plan. And I'm not clear if at this point, Mike, we need to make a recommendation of one of those three options you selected to the council or just leave it? I don't know.
That's great. Not necessary now. If you wanted to recommend, if you have a preferred option, no harm in making that recommendation. There is plenty of time, probably got five years or so before, before they'll be looking at developing up there. So there's plenty of time to make that happen.
So even though this is the concept map, it's okay if things aren't exactly how they're going to be?
Right, with that caveat, we've, we've written it into the conditions. So it's acknowledged, right? It's acknowledged in the approval, if it's approved with those conditions, that's right.
Well, then in that case, could we write in some conditions for the future phases? And I understand that the concept plan is for the first seven phases in the east and central. But I have a couple of concerns with the west planning area. Maybe just one. And, and that as it's shown now, the only access to that is on Kite Road and Garrett's Ferry Road, which are currently gravel roads. Or as our map shows, what is it called? A it says a future, future network should be served by existing collector or arterial roadways. But these are not classified as that. They're classified as a smaller roadway. So even though that's way in the future, I'd like it somehow designated that that needs to be readdressed. Along those lines, I see that you've made a condition with some reference to council can decide in the future that only emergency vehicles would have access to that, the, the development from those roads. But it, since that's already in the zoning, if you're going to make a reference to something already in the zoning, it also says in UDC article, let's see, 101112, that no more than 25 residential lots may be served by an unpaved thoroughfare. Now that may be the golf course. I don't know if the whole area is a golf course. I think there's residential areas in there, but really they're going to have to come up with another plan to get in and out rather than those gravel roads, I think.
I'd like to ask that.
Applicant, can you come up with another plan to access that particular section rather than the gravel roads?
Yes, the current plan currently is.
For everybody, and I, I'm sorry, it's not so much, would you please identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Chad Apple with Atwell. My address is 417 Selburne Way. Currently, the primary access as reflected in the traffic study is through Garrett's Ferry. The Kite Road access is emergency access only is the current plan. And the proposed density in the west is supportive of a two lane rural section, which is what's, it's, if you recall, that's GDOT, I believe, came in and improved that section of Garrett's Ferry just past the, just past the creek. So there would need to be possibly an abandonment of the gravel road or a repaving of the gravel road at some point in the future to develop that parcel.
So I get that, or I understood that the recommendations in the DRR traffic study are still contingent on the city approving it just because they make the recommendation. And it currently is not in our zoning or our concept plan to make those changes. And then I'm thinking, since I live right there too, so I have another interest in it thinking, even if you used up until the paved part, which is right by the bridge, you'd somehow have to close the road there. So there would not be through traffic on that gravel road. That gravel road just could not support that much.
Right, there, we do have an issue to solve in the future. The west phase is going to be one of the later phases, given that it's a 20 to 40 year project. It is, it is something we do have to resolve and we've identified that internally.
So I think it does say that, Mike, in somewhere I read that that needs to be resolved, but I didn't really see it as a condition. So I wanted to bring that up. I don't know if you can make that as a condition since it's probably 40 years from now, phase eight or nine.
Right, right, right. So yeah, any, any condition that's included now covers all the entire property. So that would include the, the later phases. So we could make some reference to that a resolution is required to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a few more. In planning sections south, where the reservoir is going to be, I appreciate that you colored it in blue so we could see what may eventually be underwater if it ever happens. And I appreciate that, you know, we, I think you saw the map or my outline of all the cemeteries we knew of that are on the property. But it occurred to me that there, as it's drawn now, there is no access to the corner of Woodruff and Campbellton Redwine, where the Terry Tanner Cemetery is on that little corner lot you kind of have outlined. Once Woodruff Road is closed, there will be no way to get to that cemetery. So that may need to be a concern that, well, I have two concerns with the Woodruff Road. Also, you're, you're floating 120 acres for the future school site. Thank you, thank you. What a nice thing to do. But once the reservoir floods and you close that top part of Woodruff Road, there's the only access to that school and to the cemetery is going to be in and out of Woodruff connecting to Rivertown Road. So it may be, and I don't know, I'm not an engineer, that there needs to be a bridge over planned for that reservoir or, or something said, Mike, in the conditions that some sort of access needs to be considered to get to that cemetery and to the school that's not in and out. Does that? Does the project team kind of understand what I, I'm asking?
While they are focusing, no, that, that particular parcel, which is a non parcel, it's, it's indicated located on the other side of the reservoir. Reservoir doesn't exist right now. And, and as I understand it from what I've heard is that the selection of that location is because this, that's, you tell me, please correct this, but it's supposed, intended for the high school and that's going to be open to not just residents of the community. And so that location connects down to South Fulton. Would the, the easier connection down to South Fulton. Have I described that correctly?
I don't see that on the map.
No, and they don't have a connection.
So that's a future kind of thought? That it might connect to South Fulton somehow? Which would be cool.
Yeah, the, the thought process of locating the school in what we call the south is, is exactly that, better connection. The primary, the primary density is going to occur in the south parcel with access to South Fulton Parkway. So we're trying to aggregate the, the high school closer to that higher density area. But, you know, not to speculate, but there is, that reservoir is far from
Forever.
Forever and it's, it's, hopefully it'll become available, honestly.
So yeah, the reservoir that, I don't know if there's a word, a way you can consider that since it is future, but at least that family cemetery does need to have some sort of continual access because there are living members still here that have asked about that.
Can, can I ask, Mike, where the cemetery is?
Sure, can I show you?
Well, on this, it would be okay if you go over and indicate it on the large map.
Yeah, let's see, I think I just had one more, maybe, let's see.
Guess you can have one.
Mr. Chairman, why Lori's looking for her last one? I do have a follow-up question, really just a comment. So when, when we look at condition number 11, when we're talking about Campbellton Crossroads and Highway 92, those three options are mentioned in that condition. So, Lori.
I just wasn't sure since it's not on the map and we're approving the map as a concept map, if, if we would need to make one of those recommendations in order to approve the concept map. It sounds like that's a no, that we can leave that up to council.
I think it's, it's in the conditions.
It's in the conditions.
It's in the conditions.
Okay. I found my last question and I think Doug answered it already. So there's several pieces of paper that are required in this application, the development agreement, some kind of sewer, a letter from Fulton County and from the Atlanta Water Authority and Stormwater. and from the Atlanta Water Authority and Stormwater Management Plan. Are all those things to happen at a later point?
Yeah, the goal would be to have the development agreement ready when, when the zoning, when council votes on the, on the zoning. The current language doesn't require those letters, the current requirements in the, in the zoning doesn't require the letters. We do have actually a letter provided by the property owner from, from the county on the sewer in particular. It does not address water.
I, I expect there's going to be a question, a larger question before we're done here, session and public hearing.
I'll leave it to other people, so I don't-
Go ahead and sound, but that's a-
While he's doing that, Mike, I have two typos for you.
Oh, where?
Okay, so, na, 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 na. In the packet, where you, you know, this is Mike's letter kind of thing, on page four, change the word "none" to "nine."
Where, where?
Page four, this is like in your letter packet, page three, four. Under the discussion point, second paragraph, phases eight and none. So it's eight and nine. And it's located in the east planning area, not the eat planning area.
Eat and, oh, yes.
Okay. And then the other one is on, na, 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 na. In the conditions, page five, conditions, page five, two, three, four, five. There's a typo that says, under page five, change rail to trail. That's in the last paragraph under number four. The greenway should protect the rail for a minimum of 80% of its length. It, that should be trail.
So Christine, let's move to you. If you have questions or comments, doesn't that be just questions?
Question I have for Mike is how is this not a village zoning-wise? How, can you clarify why a hamlet makes use versus a village zoning?
That's what the applicant applied for. The, our planning, for a long time, there was an assumption that there would be a village on this property, but there's no requirement. We've identified in the, in the comp plan, a preferred village area, which is where villages are required to be located, or at least the bulk of a village, they're allowed to extend outside of that. But a hamlet is also allowed.
Okay.
Right.
So it qualifies for either or?
Yeah.
And then the other thing to piggyback on Laurie's cemetery, under your conditions, you talk about access and stuff, but there's no talk about like doing some sort of fencing in or like protection of those areas? Is there anything that could be added to add some sort of protection to create a little memorial slash fenced site for those?
Potentially.
Many, how many plots are we talking about?
The, um, hmm. Four or five, something like that.
Four or five, that are within-
Three, four, five, yeah.
That are on, on the subject property, yeah, yeah.
And under the state, they have to have it surveyed because not all the sites are visible, they don't all have stones. But there's no requirement to fence them off.
Yeah, development on the same parcel, there's, there are some requirements. But if they're on their own parcel, it doesn't address what adjacent parcels-
There's a condition to protect cemeteries in this. You might want to ask the applicant if, if they have any thoughts about that, about marking it as an historic item or how they intend to protect it. So this, there are a couple of cemeteries, right?
The, the current language just says adequate measures will be taken to protect and preserve any cemeteries located on or within the project boundaries. There are some that are inset but not a part of the project, and then there are others that are on the project property.
Okay.
Hi, Mary Alexander with DMB Development. And we certainly understand the importance of protecting the cemeteries. The last thing we want is anyone going in freely and doing any kind of disruption or damage. So I can't tell you today exactly how we'll do that, but it's not the first time we've encountered this. And, and often it is fencing that's the strategy. We'll, we'll definitely follow that condition and protect them.
There's five.
Christine, any, any other questions?
Yeah.
Will, we'll move to you, and my cat has moved around the, around the table here.
I'd like to kind of continue on Christine's point about the village versus hamlet. You know, our code does allow both. So in terms of our code and our comp plan, would the city kind of be agnostic to whether this is a hamlet or village? Would we have preferred one or the other? I mean, is it?
I think that's a, I think that's an individual question, maybe a political question, or I don't know that I can-
Or would one have benefited the city more than the other? Are we, we're pretty, pretty well okay?
So the assumption, so a village offers additional density that a hamlet doesn't. My, there's also no requirement that they seek a rezoning of all 8,000 acres. So they could have sought a village and harvested TDRs only off of the, the rest of the 8,000 acres and applied those in the village. So it wasn't necessarily ever going to provide external preservation, external to the 8,000 acres. They could have used their own TDRs, but that would have been the difference. Now, they could have, right, if they had applied for a big enough village, dense enough or large enough. But again, that's up to the applicant and the property owner, I think. My preference, yeah, I, I would have loved to have seen a village. I would have loved to have seen a village big enough to pay for TDRs throughout the city. But this, that's, that's, that's not my-
Will, would you mind if I asked a question along those lines?
Okay.
So the south part, south of the parkway, it looks like you still have 700 acres. So if the market picked up in the future, and you, you would have the option of rezoning just that part, that, would that be something you would consider in the future if, possibility? I mean, if it makes sense? So you could, you're not locked into doing a hamlet?
In fact, I think I've heard that in meetings, that, that is something that you all would consider. And what, talking about, Will, my per, personally, I've always thought of as a village out there, but I can't say that that's only from some of the materials that you cite in the, of the prior, prior, prior reports and things that were done. And yeah, I'd like a village too, but with the understanding that it's more density and more residences and more commercial, and that may be not everybody's wish. That said, South Fulton area, it is in a preferred village area. The, the south central part, or the south part, is in the preferred village area, and that's what you're talking about. And in the future, that is South Fulton, and it may, may very well support a village at some point in the future. But that's speculation. It, do I, is anything I said there you all disagree with what I said? I mean, okay. Will, I didn't mean to-
No, I'm good, yeah, keep, keep moving.
I do have a, a comment and a question for the applicant. We, we truly appreciate the letter that you guys gave us from Fulton County about the, the pump station. So it's, it's, it's good to see that the design work has been approved. So that's, that's real encouraging. And also, it's encouraging to see that funding is in the process of being authorized. Is it possible that you could give us additional information regarding a timeline? Have, have that much information been provided by Fulton County?
Yes, actually, I've been working with Fulton County for almost four years on this pump station. And in the, the pump station is actually being located on the Bucard East tract. And so the easements, we've, I've walked them with Carl, and we've approved them. So I've been working with engineering team consistently. Their current schedule is to have, is to go out to bids September of this year. So they're, they're in final design documents right now.
Okay.
And right now, their commissioning date is scheduled for two years after that, which would be September 2027.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's a regional facility. It's being sized for over 6 million gallons per day, in its ultimate capacity, very large station.
Do you know that further action on the part of the county commission is, is required to approve the funds for construction?
No, the funds are, I'm being told by David Clark, Public Works Director, the funds are fully in place.
Okay. If you don't mind, Stan, if you don't mind, that sewer.
Yeah, sewer.
What about water?
Okay, I've worked on water is almost as long as I have sewer. It's City of Atlanta Water, of course. I've got documents over here for, we've, me and my team, we've, we've modeled the entire project. We've been working with City of Atlanta. We did, we did, and I think I'm sure with the Fire Marshal, we did over 30 fire flow tests throughout the city to build our model. This is, and this is about 18 months ago. And so we, we developed this model internally, and we put the demands on it based on the site plan. And we've been working back and forth with City of Atlanta Department of Watershed's modeling group. We give them our model, they tweak it, and they give it back to us, we tweak it. And so it's, we've got the distribution plans agreed to by the city. Now, the, the supply side, what we're doing is we're communicating early with them on the demands that are coming. And we're giving them our schedules that are consistent with the DRI, so they know what's coming. And they've committed to supplying the first phase in Bucard East with, with no improvements because there is an eight-inch water line on Cochrane Mill Road. So there, there are no improvements needed. And if you look at our plans, and this is not part of this conversation, but what we do is we build our phase, we build out towards 92, where there is an existing 12-inch line. So we, we start building our loops, and this is all in the modeling that we've done. Extensive coordination has occurred.
At the last, oh, go ahead, please.
So could you say that last part again? Meaning, meaning, we know this pump station is going to be for the east planning area.
Yes.
But that last statement, you're saying-
I, I was on water, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh.
I was talking about water.
That's water, not sewer.
Yeah, because if, there's a, there's an eight, there's a, there's a 12-inch water main at the intersection of Cedar Grove and Cochrane Mill. And we're eventually going to have to pull that 12-inch into east. And then we're, as we connect out to 92, we're going to pull that 12-inch line with us and make that connection at 92. Because it's, there's, there's four or five, four phases to get out to 92. And this is, this is all in the modeling, and I'll be happy to share it with you guys.
A couple of things. The, the letter that Charles and Will were talking about is a letter that was handed out today. And Mike, you're going to put this on the website for the city council, but-
It'll be a part of the city council packet, so it'll go on the website.
So it'll go on the website, and it's a, anyway, it's a letter from Rob Pitts. I'm sorry you sat down because I have a follow-up question. Sorry, it's like jumping up and down. At the last city council meeting, there was an issue that was brought up about public dedication, public roads or private roads for purposes of water lines.
Yes.
You, you heard that, you're aware of the issue.
I didn't hear, but I'm aware of the issue, yeah.
Okay, and it, it, what, what are, what are your plans in terms of how to address that?
The, the easy answer is not, not the most eloquent, but the easy answer is to simply separate your fire protection for your domestic water service. You keep your fire protection as a public, as a public City of Atlanta water line, and it's only fire protection. Then you set a meter, and then you bring in your, your domestic water service as a separate system. That's, that's the, that solves the, because as I understand it, the issue is the City of Atlanta will not set a water meter on a private road, and we don't, the city doesn't want a fire hydrant on the private side of a meter. So that solves the problem. It's essentially to give a domestic water service system and a fire protection.
And that is, that is unless the policy changes-
Unless the wastewater- And that's the hope, that's the hope of- Or the city starts taking streets, I don't know if that's possible or not, but-
Mike, did Chief Brett have a handout for us?
He did.
He did, I can pass that out.
Here it is.
It's okay, let them.
Or is this another one? Looks like the same one.
Chief, would you like, thank you very much, appreciate, unless there are further questions? And Chief, do you want to, this is all related to water, utilities. So do you want to tell us what we have here?
We like water, need water.
We like water.
What, what we've tried to do from the beginning with this project was understand the availability of water or the plan for the availability of water, and then also communicate the expectation for access throughout the project. So what I've given you here is something you might have written yourself in, in a way. But it simply states that we understand the development of the different phases and how that will occur, how some might occur concurrently. And we're just simply saying here that we are taking our direction from the four groupings of requirements or standards. And so some of it is code. Mr. Apple would be aware of it, as some of it is actual code from International Fire Code. Also, connecting through the International Building Code. Portions of that are adopted with appendices into the state minimum fire standards. That is what we are, as a city, has adopted that, empowered to, to enforce or require. There are, there's another aspect of, of the service delivery in, in the whole of the project. And that's by way of access, making sure we can get in and out for medical services well. So frequently, these conversations tend to trend to the fireside. But the emergency medical piece is actually 92% of our workload. So we want to model that. And, and at the very bottom of this document, I refer to a plan that we've already developed that makes recommendations for where and how things might occur. Whether that actually fits the project development plan, I, I don't know. It's way, way out of my wheelhouse to, to really say that. But I'm, we're, we're here to fit, fit ourselves to that. But we base some of those recommendations off of the statistical analyses provided by the Housing and Health, US Housing and Health, and by the National Fire Administration with respect to how many stations, fire stations would be necessary in this, in the whole of this project, and/or where to start one, have one in the eastern section for first development. And then, of course, how to make certain that those, those EMS services can be delivered. So it's, this is, this is, this is a real preliminary piece.
Do you have a projection at this time, how many fire stations might be needed through the end time of the project?
I do, I do. In terms of national statistics taken from the National Fire Administration, approximately one station per every 3,000 to 4,000 individuals. So at this point, looking at the total build-out of the project, we would expect that a minimum of two stations would be added. But then I have to tell you to, ask you to juxtapose over that, the travel distance and so forth, the unknown for the potential for types of incidents to occur such that, well, if you've got a station here and they're in service, but these are out of service, one can follow to cover the other. So don't forget also that on the eastern end of this, we have the support of the City of South Fulton, where we have an automatic aid agreement. So their response to fire is guaranteed, nearly guaranteed as they're available. And, and we hope to extend that agreement to include EMS, but it is not necessarily the case.
Chief, thank you very much, we need to move on. Does the applicant have this, this letter from the chief?
We've got copy.
No, no, I, this, it's okay, we'll, we'll provide that, and it's also going to go online as well.
Yes, in the packet for council.
In the packet, correct. Thank you very much, Chief, appreciate it. I'll tell you what, if you want to hand out, send this down, if that's okay, Mike? Okay, you'll pass that. And let's get back to questions, we're closing up a little bit here. Charles, do you still have four questions?
I'm good.
Okay, Reggie?
Yes, one quick question. I'm going through the DRI report, and I see a number of intersection and roundabout implementations. Just a quick question, and it's what triggers those implementations? Is there a, is there a way or a need for us to make it a condition to have those earlier than when conditions might arise? Or issues might arise rather?
Let me, let me start with the trigger question that I'm going to ask you to be asked, the second one I, I heard. The, what, what triggers the intersection improvements? What we did is we studied this by phase, and we defined a phase by the number of lots. And we, in the DRI, approved DRI study- And we, in the DRI, approved DRI study, we have a, we call a flip book. And it's how we are going to progress through the project. And it was very useful, not only from a traffic perspective, but from a, a water modeling perspective, is really communicating how we're going to develop this project. So we have, we have the exact trigger points of the, of the improvements. And it's, it's just based on the number of lots. And if, and there's provisions in the, in the notice of decision, if, if something changes, if the timing changes, if system, uh, system improvements that are, are programmed and that we rely on, those change, we have to re-study it. So it's, 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 but it is their DRI process that we have to follow, so. So there was another question that I didn't quite.
It was, uh, and the condition that we end up with traffic issues during the build of the phases is, is it, would it be necessary for us to make that a condition that some of these implementations happen sooner than later? But you, you've already addressed it.
Okay.
We're done?
Okay.
Well, I'll, uh, no, no further question? Yeah, go ahead. Okay. I guess I'll just take you back on some of the comments that were made and, and go there. Lori, you brought up some of the accesses to particularly with the west, Bucart West and the, you know, the gravel roads. It, it would seem that, because that would be phase eight, it seems. We, I mean, it would be internally accessed through phase seven, which would be paved.
What?
Also.
Can, can I, can I correct one thing?
Sure.
Uh, so for the purposes of the DRI study, we, we advanced only east and central. Those essentially represent one through seven. And then everything else is eight, because it's so far in the distance. When, when traffic, when we start doing traffic modeling for fifteen to twenty years out, it, it doesn't mean anything. So, uh, so it's not really phase eight. It could be much, much further in the future.
Right. But I, I guess the question that Lori had was, you know, regards to gravel roads. And obviously, this isn't a very distant future. I mean, it would be, it seems to me internally accessed. Of course, things could change between now and twenty years from now, right? So, uh, one of the things that it was concerned to me, and I, we had brought up in one of the meetings, was like just kind of re-fortifying the Campbellton Crossroads Historic District. And, because phase one is pretty close to that. And, I mean, is there any thoughts behind that? We kind of briefly mentioned it. I don't know if that's.
What preference you guys might be thinking of?
So Charles Adams, representing Bucart.
Charles, give me one second. For all those that are just entering, we're still in the working session. And as soon as we're finished with the working session, we'll take a break and then start the, the public meeting after that.
So John, I was hoping you could state the question again. You use the term fortifying.
Maybe that's not a, a good word to use, but it, you know, phase one is right there where the, uh, historic Campbellton Crossroads District is. And also further phases down where the Rico Crossroads. And I would like to see, you know, I, I don't know, maybe some kind of a reassurance or, or push to kind of develop that intentionally with what we've kind of laid out in the vision of the city with those two historic crossroads. And I don't, you know, I, I don't know what plans, I guess, that would come in preliminary plat area, maybe. I, you know. But i- is that part of maybe a, a future thought, or?
Uh, well, I would say Campbellton Crossroads.
Is the most immediate.
Yeah, it is the most likely to occur sooner. And I represented Carl Bucart, goodness, it's been probably three to four years ago, when a company named Pond did a, what I call a small area study that ended up with the framework that I think the city adopted, as well as the City of South Fulton. So we were very active in that, because it was the very eastern boundary of Bucard East property. And we were very supportive of the framework that got developed. It was a, I don't know, eight to nine-month public engagement process with landowners on both the City of South Fulton side of the highway, as well as City of Chattahoochee Hills. And we thought it was excellent work. And so all of our plans, at this point, not detailed out, would be consistent with that small area framework that the city adopted. So, yeah, it's, it's our intention to follow that. On the Rico Road, we also participated in the most recent study that was led by Farmer D., Darren Joffe. And there's only a small portion of the property that gets close, you know, to that crossroads, but nonetheless, it is a part of the study area there. And I don't think there was any formal adoption of it. But the general direction that the city and the consultants were going, again, is very consistent with the type of development that the landowner wants to see, but also DMB development. So that one, we have a smaller role, because it's just a small connection. Campbellton will demand a lot more of our attention. The other day, at, at one of these kind of pre-hearing meetings, you know, we were asked specifically, you know, would we take a leadership role in the Campbellton Crossroads? And we told you we would huddle on it. And the team decided that I would be the one that will, you know, lead that effort. And I'm actually very enthusiastic about it, because it has all of the components that you need to launch a mixed-use development, mostly of which is traffic, which retailers, you know, small service providers, whether it's an insurance office or doctor's office, they need to be located where a lot of people are coming by. So I'm very optimistic about the future for the Campbellton Crossroads area.
Well, that is, that is very impressive. It is some private sector leadership to fulfill the mission of the Campbellton Crossroads vision is, I think would be most welcome. We are almost at the end of the working session. My, we've got a couple of items we need to cover. Is there anything else, anyone? Yes, Mike?
Revised conditions? Do we want to go over those now, wait till the meeting?
I think we probably need to wait for the meeting.
Okay, okay. I'm gonna go ahead and pass them out to the group. You've received them by email, but we wanted to have hard copies for you.
So I'm gonna move on and, and try to deal with the other couple of things here. We have, for new business, we have a recommendation on a proposed concept plan for Tara School Hidden Library. And it's a, it's a mutual, it, it's not just the concept plan, but it's the preliminary plat as well combined, which, Mike, I think you've done a fine job in laying out the regulatory background on that. Are there any questions on that? I have a question. A, a, and that has to do with the connection. It looks like there's a, there's a, there's one connection up to the hidden library. Is there emergency service?
There are actually three. I'm not sure if the emergency service is sufficient today, but we'll ensure that it is before the building is built. That'll be part of the building permitting process. There are actually three ways back there. One through the school property, one through the, the drive with parking that's to the left. And you can see, if you look at the area, you can see that there are people driving into that and out onto that field where it's proposed. And then there's actually another way down from Tab Way. It's kind of steeply downhill. I don't know that that's really a practical access, but there are actually, you can see that that's being used also by looking at the, the wear on the, on the ground. So there are three ways in.
The applicant is here. Would you all like to make, make a comment about that, about emergency access to the hidden library?
Is it hidden? Is it hidden?
That's what it's called.
Oh, it's called.
Steve Nygren, ninety-seventy Selborn Lane. And I also have Matt Collins here with me, who's head of our development, who really could deal with any of the civil things you're talking about. But I think Mike has outlined where, where those areas are. There's, there's, you know, existing hard surface that will be further developed. Plus, the construction entrance is coming through. The pasture is also another easy way that, that there could be, you know, small emergency vehicles could reach that.
But thank you. I believe that the, the condition in there is that it has to go in front of the Fire Marshal at some point, too.
Correct. That's a normal part of the process for.
Steve, thank you. Anyone, any other?
I have a question. You know I do. So, um, I don't know building codes, but I do know there's no restroom planned. And I was wondering about that. I didn't really have a question so long as it was just a school. I figure kids have bigger bladder than I do, and they can make it. But that it says that the library will be open some hours for the public. And then I'm thinking, how's that gonna work? Is public gonna have to go in the school and be checked and security checked? Am I overthinking it, or?
Maybe, but it's, it's a good concern. But thi- this is a small civic space. So think of a treehouse. Think of our amphitheater. Think of all sorts of civic spaces. And so this is a very small civic space. And there are public bathrooms that are not the schools.
Your mind?
That, that, yeah, that, that they, they can use, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nygren. I, I think that's it. Is there anything else anyone would like to address? If not, take a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning the working session, say aye. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back. And it is now called to order if you would join us for, and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First, first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any motions to adjust the agenda?
Yeah, motion to approve an amended agenda with item two moved to number one. I believe we have a lot of public comment on number two.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Uh, I think that's good. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, the motion carries. So what that means is we're going to, in the public hearings, we're gonna hear what is known as the Bucart project first, and then we'll go to the UDC second. The next, uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. And these are approval of May fifteenth, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from May fifteen.
Is there a second?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. Diane, did you get the? You got the motion, right? Super. Before we, I need to ask the clerk something before we start. The public hearing is now open for the recommendation of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone seven thousand eight hundred forty-eight and point twenty-five acres from RL to HMMU, which is Mixed Use Hamlet, for DMB Development LLC on behalf of several owners that are listed in the agenda. To get started, I'm going to read the public hearing rules before we open the public comment period. And, and, and the procedure will be this, I'm gonna ask Mr. Morton to give us a brief, when I'm done reading the rules, give us a brief introduction, and then we will open up for public comments. Each side, those supporting the issue and those opposed to the issue, shall be given equal opportunity to address the planning commission. Excuse me, second. Each side shall be given, and in this instance, given the number of, of comments that we, cards that we have, should be given forty-five minutes to present their facts, data, evidence, or opinions, unless we decide to extend the time. The applicant may take as much of the allotted time for those supporting the issue as the applicant desires. The applicant may choose to save some of the allotted time for, for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. All others speaking either in support of or in opposition to the issues shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. The clerk will inform the speaker when his or her time is up. In consideration of other persons who are registered to speak, speakers shall conclude their comments promptly upon notification. If time for a side of the issue remains after all speakers on that side of the issue have spoken and written comments have been read out loud, those speakers on the same side of the issue were not able to complete their comments within the three-minute limit may continue, provided that the time allotted for that issue has not exceeded. Written comments in support of the issue will be read out loud if time remains after all others present at the hearing supporting the issue have spoken, and after the applicant has had an opportunity to rebut the statements made by those in opposition. If time does not remain, the written comments shall be added to the record of the meeting. Written comments in opposition will be read out loud if time remains as well. If time does not remain, the written comments will be added to the record of the meeting. Prior to speaking, each speaker will complete a public hearing card and present it to the city clerk before the beginning of the public hearing portion of the meeting. When recognized, each speaker shall state their name and address for the record. All remarks shall be addressed to the planning commission as a whole, and not to any member or to the audience. During the public hearing, members of the planning commission shall listen to the presentation made by all those who speak. No action on their part is in order until the chair declares the public hearing complete. To ensure the opportunity for all those desiring to speak before the planning commission, there is no yielding of time to another speaker. We have several conditions here regarding decorum. I'm not going to read those right now, because I don't think we've had that issue before. But they are what you think they are, about refraining from personal attacks and, and being cordial and, and diplomatic in your comments. So those are the rules for the public hearing. Mike, would you like to introduce, would you please, Mr. Morton, would you introduce the, the topic here?
Sure.
The rezoning proposal?
I'd be happy to. This is a proposal from DMB Development LLC to rezone seven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight and a quarter acres from RL Rural to HMMU Mixed Use Hamlet. There are seventy parcels included in the application. They are bounded roughly by the Chattahoochee River on the west side, Campbellton Fairburn Road, which is Highway ninety-two on the north side. And it's generally north of South Fulton Parkway, although there are seven hundred acres that extend south of South Fulton Parkway. The eastern boundary is a little, a little raggedy, hard to, hard to define with, with roads, but I think everyone's seen it on the, on the map. It's located in, on the city's adopted future development map in, mostly in the preferred agricultural and rural residential area with the, the part that straddles the Parkway in the preferred village area. And there is a little bit of the, the site that's located in historic crossroads, both up at Campbellton, where they have the, the larger presence, and a, a very small amount in the Rico Historic Crossroads area. The site has almost ten miles of Chattahoochee River frontage. Most of that frontage is in Flood Plain. And everything within two thousand feet of the river is covered by the state's Metropolitan River Protection Act, which limits the amount of land disturbance and impervious surface that's allowed in that area. It's a complex formula based on soil types and slopes. And it takes an analysis by folks at the state to determine what those numbers are. It's not something where you can, you can just sit down and say, you know, X percent of everything within two thousand, two thousand feet. So they'll have to go through that formal process before they're allowed to develop anything within two thousand feet of the river. I know they've been in touch, and they feel like they've got a good handle on that, but there is a formal process the city has to participate in with the state review for everything near the river. The site is divided into four planning areas, as you can see identified on the, on the map. Up at the north end is the east planning area. And then there's a central planning area at the, the crook of the river. And then the, south of that, along the river, is the west planning area, and then the central planning area around South Fulton Parkway and extending up. and extending up to Campbellton Red One Road. In the DRI, sorry, they've gone through a DRI process, Development of Regional Impact process, which includes a review by two state agencies. It involves a traffic study, which was quite intensive. In this case, they're always pretty big, but this one's a particularly big one. The DRI only covered the first two of those planning areas, the east planning area and the central planning area. In order to move beyond that in their development into the west or south planning area, they'll have to go through further DRI review. And that's written in the review. It's written in conditions that we've proposed for the, for the project. The east planning area holds what they identified in the DRI as the first six phases. Each one roughly 5,000 houses. The seventh phase is in that central planning area, roughly 1,000 houses. Each of those phases, or all but one of them anyway, also involve a little bit of non-residential development as well. The fourth phase includes that Campbellton Historic Crossroads area. We talked about that a little bit in the, in the work session. They indicated that that might be the most likely of everything they're talking about to move up on the calendar ahead. But in order to develop as proposed, as the city would propose in that area, which would mean without a buffer along Highway 92, some sort of further action by council will be required. Either rezoning to Historic Crossroad, which doesn't have buffer requirements, or some sort of variance to the buffer requirement, or even just a text amendment excluding that highway frontage from the buffer requirements. There are a number of ways we can go. There's plenty of time before they want to get started up there to, to happen. I'm hoping that the city will take the initiative to make that happen in cooperation with, with the applicant. Let's see. And so, and so in the DRI, there were two more development phases identified, phases eight and nine. And they are generally in those, those western and southern areas. That's half the development. But again, they'll need to come back for a DRI review. They'll also need to come back to the city for concept plan approval before any work happens in that area because it's not included. There's not enough detail. And frankly, it's far enough out on the calendar. Market conditions will change. What they want to do will change. Maybe what the city wants will change. So there's plenty, there's plenty of, of work to be done between now and then. The 7,848 acres will require 70% be preserved as open and civic space. That's 5,493 acres. They propose a total of 8,384 residential units in total, which is more than the one unit per acre that comes with the land. But they have some development rights on the reservoir property and another property owned by, by the Bucarts that they would be able to harvest TDRs. They plan on harvesting TDRs off of those. That hasn't happened yet, that would be applied in the district. With the addition of those TDRs, they would be preserving over 6,000 acres, which by itself accounts for 22% of the city's preservation goal, overall preservation goals to preserve 70% of the land in the city. So that's, that's pretty significant. See, I mentioned the DRI process. There have been several planning areas already on the property. A livable communities initiative, LCI Plan, called Chattahoochee Hill Country, a Model Sustainable Village, which took place involving a lot of community input back before we became a city. And the location of that is in the south planning area, north of the, of South Fulton Parkway. GDOT conducted the South Fulton Parkway Access Management Study back in 2011. In that study, that study was all about limiting access to the Parkway, so you don't have a whole bunch of intersections. But they did identify a location for a future intersection on the subject property between RICO Road and Cochrane Mill Road. GDOT has said they will allow an additional entrance. And you can see that the applicant is showing that on their, on their map as well. The PATH Foundation put out a plan in 2003 called the Chattahoochee Hill Country Greenway Trail Master Plan, which shows trails up and down the river and trails connecting Cochrane Mill Park and other locations in the city. In fact, there are four counties included in the plan. And there was more recently a Riverland study, which basically recapitulated everything on that, on that PATH Foundation plan that's on the subject property. So plans for paths up and down the river and a connection to Cochrane Mill Park. Riverland study also included river access, which the PATH Foundation plan didn't really address. But there are a couple of sites in the conditions to be dedicated for river access. Those locations aren't known, but the dedication of a couple of sites is included, consistent with the Riverlands Plan. And then a river crossing location also is in that Riverlands Plan. There was one in the PATH Foundation Plan as well. And that's addressed also in the conditions. And then finally, we've talked about the Historic Crossroads in Campbellton, the Historic Campbellton Framework Plan, which was discussed in the work session also, covers the Campbellton area and was adopted by the city and sort of lays out the way the city would like to see that developed.
Thank you, Mike. The public comment period is now open, and I'll invite the applicant to make initial comments on, on the side of, in, in favor of the development.
My name is Carl Bucart, and I live on 9445 Browns Lake Road in Chattahoochee Hills. I've been a member of this community for 38 years now. In 1988, bought the first, the first piece of the property and have been very involved in the community ever since. So it's a bit, we absolutely love this area and are looking forward to many, many, many more years. As we have been involved in at every step, you know, first with the Cochrane Mill Park, then afterwards with the Charter School, then afterwards in all kinds of different ways. And now we are building our forever house on another part of the property. So we stay here until we die, hopefully. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission and staff members, thank you very much for allowing me this couple of minutes. We have, since 2019, we put a group of top players together in order to come up with a plan that made sense and that was totally within the confines of the very, for us, very interesting zoning ordinance, which for some people is difficult to work with. But we liked it always because very much committed to the open space and, and the, and the green space. So with that, I will turn it over to Charles Adams, who's been our advisor, real estate advisor since 2019, when we had our first big charrette. And several of you actually attended. And ever since then, we've been fine tuning the plan. We've put an incredible group of people together, led by Charles. We found the DMB people. The DMB people do nothing but best in class, large community, mixed-use developments. And we're just very proud to be able to, during our life, control the process and come up with something that in the end, everything, everybody can be, be proud of. Because some development is inevitable. And, but the way this ordinance works, we're going to make it just into something that everybody can be proud of. So thank you very much, Charles.
Charles Adams. And while I'm here, I live at 4555 Cochrane Mill Road. Spent a lot of time over there over the last five years. Thank you for the opportunity to share our vision. We're going to move through it pretty quickly tonight because we very much look forward to the public comments of those that have elected to come here tonight. So let's go to the next slide. To avoid redundancy with Mike's description, which was very thorough, the only thing I would add to what he discussed is the image you see on the screens now are, is aerial. And it shows the entire 7,848 acres, bounded on the north by the Chattahoochee River. And really, the southern part of the property is the South Fulton Parkway, Garrett's Ferry Road to the very west, and the Campbellton Crossroads to the east. Next slide. So property of this scale, projects of this size, are absolutely an evolutionary thing, not a revolutionary thing. So the anticipated period for the buildout of the entire property is in the 20 to 40-year range. So it will be occurring over a long period of time. The phasing that you see up on the screen, again, mentioned by Mike, Phase 1 is the very northeastern portion of the property, which is a little over 2,000 acres with the Campbellton Crossroads up along Highway 192, or Highway 92, excuse me. Then we'll be moving west to what's known as the central planning area. More than likely, then moving to the south planning area along the Parkway, with the final phases being on what's referred to as the west planning area, the orange color that's on the map. We'll go to the next slide, and I'm going to hand this over to Mary Alexander.
So some of you have heard my story already if you attended the first read on our zoning. But I do think it's important to remind everybody that we've been doing this since 1984. And I have personally been with the company for 21 years and have worked on all those beautiful projects that you see on the screen. Happy to have you review our website, dmbedevelopment.com. You'll see that we've saved thousands of acres in many of these projects. I can't promise every one. But we usually are doing that because it's the right thing to do in conjunction with the natural, natural landforms that we have. Everything doesn't need to be developed in this world, and we recognize that. So it's important to remind everyone that we held a series of community meetings, and you're going to hear about that in some detail from Charles a little bit. We never produce the same community twice. That's not the business we're in. We listen to the people who live in the area where we're coming to develop. And what I mean by that is we want to do what's right for Chattahoochee Hills, not just for Atlanta, not just for Georgia, not just for the southeast. We take it all the way down to Chattahoochee Hills. And that's why we had so many meetings. And we'll continue to listen over the next 20 years to how we're doing. And are we living up to what we've promised here when we come to Chattahoochee Hills? We let the land tell us how to do what we're planning to do. But we let the people help us decide the what. And so we've already started that process that you're going to hear about. I want to reassure you, we're only doing 83, 84 housing units. You've heard other stories, I know. But that is the total housing units that we're committing to do in this project. And we don't do those all at once. We'll be coming to the city with subdivision maps of 600 lots at a time. We release land to builders to build the homes. We assemble groups of builders. And we might have 15 to 20 model homes with different builders at one time in a phase. But that's just one phase. And we have to come back to the city and ask for permission to divide the property into more lots to let the builders keep building. So you get to look at us a lot over the next 20 years, which is why I'm here, because I want to reassure you, we know that. And we want to live up to the promises we're making. We are thrilled that there is a uniform development code here because we're not often handed that luxury, and we have to help cities write these things. And we tend to elevate the standards because we write things that make sense. So anyway, I won't take any more time. I'm happy to answer questions later. But I wanted, just to reassure you, that our values, our values and goals are aligned with the city's values and goals for this project.
Can we go to the next slide, please? So this image, you know, starts to give you a sense of the, not only the planning areas, but the areas in yellow where the development would likely occur on roughly 30% of the entire set of the acreage. In addition to the 8,300 residential units, it's been mentioned a couple of times. There are also plans to do what is in the code, referred to as non-residential development, what a lot of us call commercial development. It'll be a mix of uses, retail restaurants, offices, schools, churches, all the things that you would tend to find in a small town with it. We are adhering not only to the minimum square footage requirement for non-residential uses with this rezoning, but we have committed to double that amount after having listened to not only the leadership in the community, but also the residents who are looking for additional, what I call, service-related commercial. Let's go to the next slide. This next slide kind of makes it a little bit more apparent of how the open space will be laid out throughout the property. This was arrived at by doing extensive, what we call, resource mapping. And I want to just state, you know, clearly that 65% will be permanently dedicated for open space with another 5% for civic space, which gets you to the total of 70% set aside. That number, when combined, is 5,493 acres. A serious commitment, as you heard, that is 22% of what the whole city's goal is for permanent dedicated open space. This point, turn over to Chad.
Chad Apple, 417 Silver Way. So I'm here to talk about traffic and trans. Could you advance the slide? I'm sorry. No. Did it go to the next one? So.
Next slide.
So traffic and transportation. My team and I have, have been in the DRI process for over a year. And we touched on a few specific points during the work session. But I don't think what is really communicated well was what that process is. I mean, during that, during that year period, during that 12-month period, we, we worked with over, over 20 stakeholders. I mean, ARC, Greta, Serta, of course, the city, all the local cities, MARTA, just incredible number of stakeholders. And that, that early involvement, that extended involvement led to over, almost 90 intersections being studied, one of the biggest studies that they'd ever received. So we really did a big study to really understand the impacts of the project. So in what is such, it's, it really is a good, I mean, nothing, no process is perfect, but it's a great process because that process did inform the site plan. What it led to was, was geometric design, where we, we pulled all the non-residential uses into the project and brought them together. And we made them walkable to the nodes of, if you look at the planning, UDA did, it's fantastic. The, the, we have internal spine roads to keep, to minimize the impacts to the adjacent roadway. So it, it really is a good process. Like I said, no process is perfect, and we're going to have to revisit it over and over again. But it was, it, it did reap benefits that I think you can see in the site plan. Water and sewer, I think we also touched on that during the work session. You've got letters from Fulton County Committing to Sewer Service. And I would love to talk to anybody who has a question about water. We have got commitments from City of Atlanta Water to serve the first phase. And we have a really good understanding of what's needed to serve the entire project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Next slide.
If I can make a suggestion, we do, you probably want to let, leave time for the other commenters. So please, you can use the whole time if you want, but please.
I'll get into speed talking at this point. The public engagement process on this actually began six years ago when Carl sponsored a week-long planning charrette that on any given day, over 75 participants who were elected officials, Chattahoochee Hills, planning staff, Atlanta Regional Commission, members and employees, very broad-spread, spread public engagement. Out of that came some goals. You see up on the slide here, the first three, very much focused on the natural landscape. Absolutely embrace the Chattahoochee River to engage the public with it and make sure there be an extensive set of pathways, not the least of which is a commitment for entire 10 miles of the northern boundary to have a public Riverlands Trail. 10 miles of the northern boundary to have a public Riverlands Trail. Let's go to the next slide. We, as well as those who participated in that charrette and on top of that DMB, embrace this notion of hamlets scattered among the green space. You heard Chad talk about, we want to make sure that we minimize traffic on the existing state roads and we intend to have these non-residential nodes within walking distance of the residential properties. Let's go to the next slide. Many of you I recognized tonight made it to some of the open houses that have occurred, a total of three over the last month or so. Two of them hosted at the Horse Mansion where we ended up receiving enormous amount of comments, ideas. One of them, 113 participants, the other around 150. Then we had a virtual open house that shared all of the things we heard from the people who came to engage in the open house. Let's go to the next slide. This is, for those of you that can take a closer look at this online, since all this was posted, you can see a lot of the comments that were received. We had people putting sticky notes on particular images they liked. Let's go to the next slide. We had a very talented illustrator there and it was kind of the last stop on the open house where the participants could come up and say what they would love to see in this community and the illustrator drew what they said they'd like to see. Let's go to the next page. So just a lot of great ideas came from those who participated in it. Let's go to the next slide. We also have set up, you can go into the next one, that was speaking about the virtual meeting. We've got a community engagement site that you're able to go to at any time and get an update on the project. Let's go to the next slide. And now I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Evening Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Jessica Hill. My business address is 600 Peachtree Street and I represent the applicant. This is a very quick slide. I know you have looked through the zoning conditions. We have been working with the staff on the conditions and you also have some red lines just to make some clarifications, which I understand Mr. Morton will go through, not intended to be substantive changes, just trying to clarify some of the verbiage that was included in the conditions. For those that are in the audience as well, you know, the conditions include a requirement to construct and dedicate the Riverlands Trail along the Chattahoochee Riverfront to public river access points, locations for fire, police and school services, and as well as the traffic improvements that the DRI requires that we needed to facilitate this project. We would like to reserve any remaining time for rebuttal. For those speaking in support, we would like to try and have five minutes, which means there's about 20 minutes or so for those speaking in support. So with that, I will turn it over to anybody who wants to speak in support. Thank you.
Ms. White, would you please, thank you very much. Thank you all. Please, we're doing the, those in favor and support of the, of the proposal.
Okay, we have a total of 16 in support. We have three that do not want, wish to speak but are in support that is included in with that 16 and want to, and two written statements in support. The first person is Steve, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your names, Hurwitz.
Hurwitz. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Steve Hurwitz, 10625 Serenby Lane, Chattahoochee Hills. I've been a citizen of Chattahoochee Hills for almost 20 years now. I'm a proud resident of Serenby. I've served on the board of Cochrane Mill Nature Center for over 10 years, including seeing us through a tragic event over there. I was one of the remaining three board members who stayed with it and reintroduced it. My wife, my wife wrote the curriculum for the charter school. I was on the building committee. She volunteers for brickworks and contributes. So that said, let me cut to what I believe we're here for tonight. I've attended the open houses, the information meetings at the farm property. I saw the plans and the vision. I talked to the architects, the developer, the land planner, the civil engineer. I studied the land plans, the various phases with that 30 to 40-year absorption. I compared it with zoning rules. It complies, basically. There is always room for improvement and discussion, but I urge the Planning Commission to approve this change because if not for this, the way it's been done, for what? In my job, every day for the last 15 years, I collaborate with dozens of developers across the country. I've been doing it for 15 years and I'm going to go on the record. This application, the website, the forthrightness of the application, it's unsurpassed by any I've seen. It's a transparent, intentional community. Everything is spelled out in black and white. I urge you, everyone, to go to their website, which is bukhartfarmproperty.com. It's all there in black and white and color, the vision, the schedule, the team, plus it asks for input from others. So I'll give my time over, but I urge you to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next, our next speaker is Diana Wilson.
Good evening Commissioners, I'm Diana Wilson. I live at 8130 Cochrane Mill Road. We all want what's best for our community. One thing we can agree on is that being in nature is good for us. In fact, it's been proven that being in nature improves our physical health and our mental health. That's why parks are so important. When Chattahoochee Hills became a city in 2007, it did not own any parks. A number of us went door to door asking for donations to buy the parks. The response was overwhelming. 373 families donated to buy the parks in Chattahoochee Hills and our city was able to perch more than 1,000 acres of parkland. Thank goodness. This shows how important parks are to our community. The largest donor provided enough money to purchase all of Cochrane Mill Park. Think about that. One person donated enough money for the city to purchase 800 acres of land. That person was Carl Bukhart. Thank goodness. As members of the Planning Commission, it is your responsibility and your privilege to determine what's best for the community. By recommending this rezoning, you'll be providing a park on the Chattahoochee River 10 miles long. There'll be trails for enjoying nature, river access for fishing, floating and paddling, areas for picnicking and family gatherings. This will be public land to be enjoyed by all of us and our children and our grandchildren and their grandchildren. And for generations, people will say, we are so lucky that our leaders saved this land for us. Thank goodness. I have to list. These are the names of the 373 families in our community that donated to buy our parks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Patricia Lesko.
Hello, everyone. My name is Pat Lesko. I live in Serenby at 10579 Serenby Lane, Chat Hills 30268. I am in favor of the Bukhart Farms' development proposal. From all that I have read and heard, the plan aligns completely with the vision for the future development that lies behind our zoning. That vision in the zoning is one of the reasons we were so delighted to find Chat Hills, a patch of fresh air and green space, both near to the kids and near to an airport. The 8,000 acres of Bukhart Farm represents 20% of the total area of our city and this plan provides, preserves 5,500 acres of green space, not little bits and pieces here and there, but in large contiguous blocks. We moved to Chat Hills in 2017 from Tinicum Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, a basically rural area roughly half the size of Chat Hills. The Tinicum residents have been working since 1992 when citizens founded a local land conservancy. They have been working to, and I quote from the conservancy's mission statement, "Protect our rural character and natural resources through community-based land conservation." I checked on their website this morning and in those 33 years since 1992, the Tinicum Conservancy now has 5,100 acres or 25% of the township, protecting it from further development in perpetuity. It has been a slow process. This Bukhart plan preserves 5,500 acres or 10% more land than Tinicum has protected in over 33 years with one fell swoop of the pen, so to speak. Please know, I was concerned about preserving land and open space and rural character before moving to Chat Hills. In 2004 in Pennsylvania, my husband and I got together with two of our immediate neighbors and collectively put permanent conservation easements on our three properties, altogether protecting 42 acres from future development. It was a matter of, I'll protect your rural view if you'll protect my rural view. Ours was a voluntary easement, meaning we received no compensation other than some tax breaks for giving up the development value of our land. We wanted to keep our immediate neighborhood rural and we did what we could to achieve that. If I had more time, I would list the virtues of living in a walkable community, such as the hamlets are designed to be. That is something Tinicum did not have and something I've really come to appreciate. So I'll conclude by saying the Bukhart Farms has given us a good plan. The Planning Commission and Community of Development have added thoughtful and appropriate conditions and I hope to see this plan approved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Margot Everett.
Hello, my name is Margot Everett and I live at 9510.
Can you pull the microphone up so, yeah.
All right. Hello, my name is Margot Everett and I live at 9510 Glacial Lane. Thank you very much for having, giving me the opportunity to speak and also sharing the additional information regarding the development. I am in favor of the development and very excited about all the possibilities that are to come. I do have some questions or concerns that I just wanted to bring about and the first one would be, would there be an opportunity to continue communicating with the neighbors outside of the survey that was given? That's one question for, for later. And then the second question would be during the building process, because my subdivision is off of Cochrane Mill Road, would there be some type of traffic control for the trucks and the working crews as they come in and out to develop this property? It's very inconvenient when you're trying to get to work early in the morning and you've got a lot of trucks in traffic and one-stop sign. So those are my two concerns and I hope that you guys will be able to address them accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brett Davidson.
Hi y'all, I'm Brett Davidson. I live at 10660 Hutchison Ferry Road. I'm also the President and Executive Director of the Atlanta Chapter of the Southern Off-Road Bicycle Association. And I was, we were lucky enough to be invited to the design charrette prior to the pandemic and were involved in giving some comments on the plan. And I was happy to see at the open house that the plan, you know, was realized. And I was also, I also sit on the Riverlands Design Committee. I've sat on that for about three and a half years, helped vision out the design, the design of a greenway from Beaufort Dam to Chattahoochee Ben State Park and very excited to see that that condition is in this plan. Also, I'm excited to see that there will be a connection between Cochrane Mill Park, RICO Park. We also, we build mountain bike trails or trails for outdoor recreation on public land for everybody use, so we helped out at Cochrane Mill Park, so. But we also advocate for off gravel cycling, so that connection down Upper Wooton Road between the two parks is pretty vital to that route. And I know a lot of people move down here to cycle that route, so really excited to see that in the plan as well. We've also been lucky enough to work with Carl's son Stan on his land in Kingston Downs to build some trails for the Middleland High School Mountain Bike Association in Georgia. That's where they hold the state championship. So I know, you know, green space and connectivity and cycling runs in their families. I'm just, I'm coming out in full support of the plan and thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Nygren.
Steve Nygren, 9070 Selborn Lane. You know, 25 years ago, the rural character of this area was at real threat. The forest that we were used to on the west side of Palmetto was flattened for the houses that you see sitting there now on Carlton Road. Another developer doing the same type houses, but a contract on the 230 acres on Wilkerson Mill Road. That today is a stalled development. Another developer had a contract on the 100 acres on Hutchison Ferry Road. We were lucky to bring the Conservation Fund in for a backup contract and managed to save that from development and that is now the Hutchison Ferry Park. Those dots were happening all over and Fulton County was going to allow any piece of land to develop in any kind of housing. We came together as a community to look at what all alternatives were, from coffees to public meetings. The Bukharts were part of that effort. And when the community decided that a plan that could save 70% of land, we asked the major developers if they were willing to put 70% of their land into non-development. That has not happened in any other urban community across the United States. The overlay was established in 2002, later became part of our zoning regulations in 2007 when we became a city. And that same overlay that turned into our zoning has been ruled, we looked at for each comp plan every five years. And because no one has found any better way to preserve the rural character, that zoning law remains as it is and is being studied by universities and other governments across the United States who all come to look at what we're doing. Carl Bukhart supported this 25 years ago to put his land voluntarily into 70% that would be part of the zoning. And our only task today, your task should be only to know if it fits the zoning regulations. This isn't about whether we like it or don't like it or if any groups do. Does it fit the zoning regulations that have been in place now for 19 years since the city happened? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jennifer Jigler, Jennifer Jordan.
Good evening Commissioners and citizens. Thank you for your time and invitation to speak to you today on behalf, I'm Jennifer Jordan. I'm a patron of Bukhart Farms. Okay. On behalf of the Equestrian Community, my name is Jennifer Jordan. I'm a UGA graduate, business and landowner in Fayette County, a mother of two, frequent patron of Bukhart Farms and District Commissioner for the Woodbine Pony Club, which is celebrating its 50-year anniversary this year. Please, young girls. I'm also a graduate HB of Pine Trace Pony Club. Our club covers all of South Metro Atlanta, so the future of Bukhart is important to us and for the future of our sport and the entire South region of the United States Pony Club. My club, Pine Trace, along with its host facility in Hogansville, are no longer in existence. Poplar Place in Columbus is the only equine facility south of Atlanta still in operation from my childhood. Due to land shortages and the abilities for families to keep inherited sums of land whole and financially sustainable, equine facilities are becoming fewer and far between. Bukhart, in addition to being a top-level facility sought after by many Olympians, is one of the only two maintained cross-country courses available south of Atlanta. is one of the only two maintained cross-country courses available south of Atlanta and one of the few in the state of Georgia. My Pony Clubbers and I have been frequenting other states like North Carolina, South Carolina, Kentucky and Florida to enjoy these types of facilities, which also offer amenities and activities currently lacking in Georgia. We recognize that we must get creative and petition to keep facilities like Bucart, but be willing to share our events and space for other purposes. And by doing so, open up the basis of interest and even invite new volunteers and spectators to the sport. If you've never watched cross-country, I can think of few more thrilling things to behold. Venues like Will's Park and Alpharetta are good models of city-owned facilities. They lack cross-country though. While we are here to advocate on behalf of all equestrians and we also want to speak specifically on behalf of the preservation of the cross-country courses and the sport of eventing. The current course has taught each of these kids how to ride cross-country. They've served as participants in events, but jump judges as well to the highest levels of the sport. With development inevitable and a required 5,400 acres of green space and with so much land available, could the equestrian community keep the existing structures and courses to be included in that green space? As a property owner with far fewer zeros in my acreage, I recognize fully we cannot rely on the backs and wallets of millionaires and billionaires to subsidize land and front taxes and insurance for our sport. Therefore, development and revenue are inevitable. We need to evoke the support of communities like Chat Hills and we, the patrons of the sport, to unite for the continuation of the ancient noble art of horsemanship. Together, we can preserve land for generations to come. We also see so much potential to preserve the area's rural roots like Aiken, Ocala, Tryon, and for Georgia to be a premier destination for equine sport with highly sought-after facilities and amenities that can serve multiple functions while bringing revenue to the city of Chat Hills and maintaining the integrity of the area of the already thriving equestrian community here. We are here to partner with you, not just as current horse people, but for the future of equine sport everywhere.
That's your time.
Thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Amy Dobbins.
Thank you ma'am and thank you ladies for coming.
Ms. Dobbins. Okay. Um. The Woodbine. Okay.
Um, I am Kat D'Ortenzo. I am a patron of Bucart Farms and I am also just over the county line on Jim Star Road. I am a local equine professional and youth leader through the United States Pony Club. Like I said, I am also a regular patron of Bucart Farms and the equestrian facilities there are a cornerstone for my business. I am here to speak on preserving the equestrian facilities as green space in the midst of this potential development. Change is inevitable and now that you've heard the heart of the matter from Jen and she's speaking for our girls, I'm here to share the economic and community impact of the equine industry. The horse industry is often seen as a niche activity, but in reality, it is a major driver of local economies. In Georgia alone, the equine industry contributes over $750 million annually, supporting more than 7,000 jobs. That's just the direct impact. When you include the ripple effect to feed suppliers, veterinarians, retail, tourism, et cetera, the total regional impact becomes much broader. Horse shows alone can bring in hundreds of thousands to several millions of dollars per weekend depending on the scale. They generate sales tax, lodging tax and repeat tourism. To create long-term sustainability, many show venues are adopting a country club-style membership model to provide consistent revenue in between events and also placing their facilities into conservation and land trust to protect the green space for years to come. It's not just about riding, it's about community lifestyle and land stewardship. Tryon International Equestrian Center in Polk County, North Carolina has become one of the most successful examples of what a fully built-out facility with community and economic development mine can do. In its 11 years of operation, Teak has seen more than 4,000 jobs created, $330 million in gross regional produce and it generates over $50 million annually into the regional economy. In 2018, when it hosted the World Equestrian Games, the regional impact topped $400 million and the level of exposure brought in tourists, built infrastructure and permanently boosted hospitality and retail in the area. What Tryon demonstrates is that an equestrian center can be more than a horse show. It can be a community hub, an economic engine and a driver of rural investment, which I feel aligns with what the community of Chat Hills is about. And if done correctly, these venues become financially self-sustaining with lasting value for the region. Chat Hills, the community, has the chance to become a destination for equestrians with this development, which will infuse like-minded individuals into the community and help preserve the magic that is Chat Hills. The horse industry is not a luxury. It's a real contributor to economic vitality, land conservation, tourism and wellness. Thank you for your time and if anyone has any questions regarding all of this, I'm available. And Ms. White also has a little handout for you. Oh, you guys already have it. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Diane, was this the handout?
Yes, that's the handout.
Okay, thank you.
I've got three more.
Okay, if I can just jump in and inquire how much time we have left?
The applicant has 27 minutes left.
27 minutes.
Actually now, how much left on the?
24, 41. 24, 37.
I think we should continue with the, with the comments please. If we need to, we can extend the time.
Dr. Julie Lord.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Julie Lord and I have a business at 11126 Saranby Lane. I am a doctor of chiropractic and have a Pilates studio there. As I hear all these amazing comments, I think what it shows the Bucarts have built is trust. And I think that's what everyone is looking for, is who can we trust? And what Steve shared shows also that Steve, that the Bucarts can be trusted. They are stewards of the land. The park, I was going to share, but Diane, you stole my thunder. Of the land, I believe it's 800 acres that the Bucarts helped to donate back with their large donation. And I know all of us have enjoyed that park with our children, ourselves, running, playing over there. And the, he's going to keep the land the same. Everything stays the same. The zoning ordinance, it will be the 70/30. So I'm in vote that we go forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Angela Addison.
Good evening, my name is Angela Addison. I live at 5451 Two Hills Drive. I just wanted to share a definition with you as to why I support this project. I looked up the word intention. That is our logo for the city that we are a place of intention. And I just wanted to see how true to form that was as regards this project. It says an intention is an idea that you plan to carry out. It's your goal, purpose or aim, something you mean to do. Creating a mental framework that guides your actions, your thoughts and your reactions. With an intention, you move about the journey and how you want to experience life. You have a desire to perform a certain action and a belief that one will perform this action. Carl Bucart is a person of intention. And he has shown this intention through three Cs. Community, communication and commitment. I didn't know that he was the one who purchased Cochran Mill. But that takes a big investment in the community and understanding what the community wants and understanding what the community needs. Since he started this project, he's been involved with partnering with individuals to make sure that there is fluid and transparent communication through the website, the open houses. Even having a private meeting, uh, not a private meeting, but just a singular meeting with a state set Cedar Grove just to kind of see what we think about the project. Haven't really seen that type of communication from any private person. I mean, it's his land. Like, he doesn't have to, but he did. And that shows his intention with this project. And then his commitment through wanting to keep the land preserved and investing in this, the equestrian programs and just so much that's going on and just investing the time, the traffic studies. I mean, we, I've only been in the city for a year and a half. I have not seen not one applicant, outside of myself of course, to come up with such a detailed plan. Yeah, just a little bit, with pride, to come up with such a detailed plan. And I like that. He's a man of intention and this is about intention. And I want to see other children be able to benefit from the equestrian and the biking and the rowing and stuff. I have a son who's on the spectrum. Can you imagine if he learned how to ride a horse? I support this project.
Thank you ma'am. How many more?
One more. Colette Appert. Did I pronounce that right? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Colette Appert. I'm a resident at 458 Selborn Lane. I live in Saranby. I also work in Saranby. Like Dr. Lord, some of the things I were going to say earlier this evening have been already mentioned, so I don't want to repeat a bunch of things. So I've decided to say some things a little bit more on a personal note. I've known Suzanne and Carl for quite some time. I've been out to Bucart Farms numerous times. And I will say, um, I've never met people that have been stronger land stewards. And I'm from Bozeman, Montana, so large land owners. I've seen them interact with people that they didn't know, talking with such pride about their land, inviting people out to their property. Hey, come on out, bring your bikes, go hiking. They talk about their land, always inviting people out. The first time I met them and they explained to me, Bucart Farms gave me their cell number. I came out and I texted her and she goes, "Oh, I really didn't think you were going to come." And here I was and they gave me a little tour and I was like, "Wow, this is amazing." And so I just want to go to show like how much they love their land. They walk it every day. I, I mean, 20,000 steps pretty much. So I know that personally, they enjoy their land. They take a lot of pride in it. And I know they wouldn't do anything without intention, without care for the landscape around them and their neighbors and respect for the land. And I fully support their plan. They are incredible people with respect and intention. So Carl and Suzanne, I hope that this goes through for you. I would think that this would be nothing but positive for our community. And one other quick note I was going to mention. What the Bucarts have done for the community when they host horse shows and music venues and when they have Tough Mudders and when they have, I'm trying to think, when they allow movie studios to film on their property. Those people rent rooms in Saranby, they have, or in the community, not just Saranby. But that's my connection, so that's why I'm making that note. They eat in our restaurants. So they are supporting our community, which we all benefit from. So that's a little bit of intention from the past and I think that will continue on into the future. And I hope you vote in favor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you ma'am.
That is the- The, um, that is the comments from the supporters, the opposers. We have Mitchell Wolf.
Good evening commissioners. My name is Mitchell Wolf, 300 Motto Lane. I speak for the hundreds of neighbors who have reached out to me alarmed, outraged and deeply concerned by what's being proposed. As members of the Planning Commission, your duty is not to developers, but to us, the residents of this city. You are here to protect our community, not to rubber stamp reckless speculative projects that would permanently alter who we are. This rezoning request is in growth, it's radical transformation. It would inject more than 45,000 new residents and daily visitors into a city of just 3,500. That's not expansion, that's upheaval of our infrastructure, our safety, our environment, our tax base and our community identity, and we never asked for it. The current zoning allows for roughly 400 homes. Development that protects our roads, our rural charm and our fiscal sustainability. This proposal would obliterate that. We want answers. Where are the independent financial models justifying this rezoning? What tax assumptions were used? What will it cost in terms of school operations, emergency response, water, roads and city services? Our research shows the schools alone would cost 21 to 25 million dollars annually to operate. Who pays for that? We do. Don't distract us with the vague talk of a 30-year build-out. The top five US home builders constructed over 225,000 homes last year. This could be built in five years, not 30. And when it is, the annual costs fall on us not to develop. Where is the water impact study? Data centers often use as much water as two to three golf courses. This plan includes a 200-acre golf course. Where is the analysis? Where is the outrage? What about golf cart safety? What independent studies have you commissioned? Especially in light of issues faced in Peachtree City and even Saranby? Have you commissioned third-party traffic studies, environmental reviews, ASHTO compliance reports, or are you relying solely on developer-funded documents? Under Georgia law, including the Ghul decision, you are required to consider the legal implications. Where is that analysis? Where was the public engagement? I was never contacted. Neither were the vast majority of residents you claim to represent. It would be inconceivable and a dereliction of your duty if all of these analyses were not thoroughly conducted before tonight's meeting. We are not simply asking for transparency, we expect it. Every study, every projection, every assumption behind this proposal must be made public. This is democracy. The majority rules. And while every voice deserves to be heard and respected, the overwhelming majority of residents oppose this project decisively, vocally and unequivocally. It's not close and pretending otherwise is an insult to the public you serve. We love this city. We're not going anywhere and we will not allow you just to give it away.
Thank you sir.
Next is Gavin Ireland.
Good evening commissioners. Gavin Ireland, 4500 Cochran Mill Road. Former home of Mr. Bob Fuller, as many of you may know. So often when we hear about new developments, we think of fast-paced construction companies coming in with their big machines and their tractors and their bulldozers, rampaging our way of life and what we have grown accustomed to. But after hearing the presentation that was presented before us and seeing the plans, I wanted to come here with an open mind and really see what was in store for the community that my wife and I have recently moved to just over a year ago. We wanted to get away from the hustle and bustle of the city and we wanted to come to a town like Chattahoochee Hills where our children and our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren can grow and reap the benefits of nature, the landscape, of the lakes, of the rivers, of the streams and of the forests. We hope that the plans that have been laid out before us are adhered to. Because if they are, I think that this is a good proposition. I think that from what I've heard from Mr. Bucart and the family and the developers, I think that extending this proposed plan over a long period of time is the way to go. If that happens, then I think that this will be something that's favorable to our city. But I do have some concerns. As the CEO of Georgia Green Energy Services, I'm very familiar with projects like this. As the CEO of Georgia Green Energy Services, I'm very familiar with projects like this. And the questions that I have are related to the impact on the infrastructure and what that's going to look like for the residents. Because a project like this is going to have a significant impact on the underground, on the roads, on the traffic, on the congestion for a number of years. I'm also concerned about the impact that it will have on the utility and the grid. We're in South Fulton or just outside of South Fulton and we know about the concerns already with data centers and the big corporations coming here. So I would like to know more about the plans for renewable energy sources, for solar energy, for turbines, for windmills. What plans are there in store for that? And how will this community, how do you see this community growing responsibly without having a significant impact to the community at hand? And those are my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Danine Crawford.
Danine Crawford, 5575 Cochran Mill Road. I grew up right here in Chattahoochee Hills. In fact, this building was the elementary school that I attended. So I've been here for over 52 years. Seen a lot of changes in 52 years, but not significant changes, which is a blessing. I was here when they were speaking about making a watershed management or using part of the property that Mr. Boukart is looking at using and it was going to be a water treatment plant. Families that were legacy families had to move out of Chattahoochee Hills because of that plan. So tonight I'd like to speak to you about that. Walt Disney once said, "Growing old is mandatory, but growing up is optional." With this view of the world, Walt Disney fueled the power of imagination and our desire to fulfill our every dream. Once unleashed, we can and still do imagine lots of wonderful things, some achievable, some are not. For example, on the proposed Boukart Farms, there is a relatively large lake shown on the marketing materials. Maybe it's not a lake, but just a reservoir. Either way, a fresh body of water always looks enticing, perhaps even biophilic, a realtor's dream. This is where imagination can sometimes pull tricks on us because some of our longstanding neighbors know the history of this proposed lake. They recall the controversy in the proposed reservoir, why the property lays dormant and some say there is a 50-year moratorium on any further development as a watershed. This is where growing up for the city is no longer optional. The city needs to investigate the history of this property, know its limitations and curb any attempt to misrepresent something that just isn't possible. Anything less than strict due diligence on this site puts our city at risk as being an accessory to a fraud and enabling a developer's vivid imagination to turn into a nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Martha Hall.
Martha Hall, 7650 Rico Road, Chat Hills. I also have concerns and I do know development is inevitable. However, you know, I think human safety should be the first concern that we all have. And the traffic problems that that many homes and that sort of development would cause needs to be reconsidered. I was a, I'm a descendant of settlers who were awarded a draw in the land lottery in the 1830s due to military service in the Revolutionary War. I've been enjoying this rural area my whole life, so have my grandparents and great-grandparents and great-great-grandparents. Some of them are even buried out here, which I noticed is not on the map over there. I know of two cemeteries, one on Kite Road and another one at the corner of Woodruff and Hamilton Redwine Road. We need to know what sort of access we will have to those cemeteries. We need to know how we're going to park. But we, mostly what I really think we need to think about is the human safety in this entire situation. 8,000 acres rezoned at one time ahead of decades of development? I just don't see that and I don't understand why we're even considering it. Again, the infrastructure is a serious consideration. And while this is a beautiful drawing and it's a great idea, nobody's considering the taxes for the residents here and what the ensuing requirements will require that we'll be paying for in the future. And I just hope that you'll consider that for you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And our last speaker decide not to, well, check, they do not want to speak and that's Clayton Sexton. And we have six minutes and 42 seconds remaining.
Good evening again. I'll attempt to address some of the concerns in order. Sorry, this mic does not like me. As Mr. Morton's report indicates, as the application suggests, this proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Hamlet mixed use is consistent with what the plan recommends. It satisfies the criteria in Section 3-10 of the UDC. It meets the standards. While we appreciate that there's a desire to have all of the information about this project now and all of the studies available, it is a very large project and those will come over time. There was an economic feasibility study that was commissioned by the city. It's available on the website done by KB Advisors that addresses the expected economic impact of this project. It addresses the school impact specifically as it relates to the cost of the schools. And as I noted in an earlier discussion, this proposal also includes accommodations for services like police, fire and schools. I appreciated Mr. Ireland saying that he, him and his family want to reap the benefits of the river and the forest because that's exactly what this plan will do. There will be almost 5,500 acres of open space and civic space. There's a requirement to have the Riverlands Trail. There's a requirement to have connectivity through the site. So it provides an opportunity that is not available if the site was to remain zoned as is. You know, with regard to the reservoir property, we have shown it in blue because it is identified for a reservoir. It is not included in this application. It is not part of the application. It's not being marketed as some sort of amenity for the proposal. But it is shown in blue because that is what we understand that the intention to be for that property. And also with almost 8,000 acres, it's hard to identify where everything is. So having the blue reservoir area was helpful in that method. With respect to traffic, the traffic study identified the improvements that are necessary based on the traffic impact from this project. So any improvement that is needed because of this project is identified in that traffic study. It's required in the development of regional impact and those are conditions on the developer. So if there's a traffic signal needed or a turn lane needed because of this project and as it gets phased, that will be on the developer to implement. We appreciate the cemeteries. I know this came up in the work session. I did note that in the code, there is a requirement for a fence around the cemeteries if they're on the same parcel. So there certainly would be a fence to the extent they're on the same parcel. And DMB will obviously accommodate access to the cemeteries and secure them in some manner. Just to reiterate, and I know it's been said several times, this is not 8,000 acres being developed at one time. This is not, I'm not sure where Mr. Wolf came up with 45,000 residents and visitors. I've never heard that number and I'm not sure how you would generate that from this project. But this is a phased project. It's not 8,000 acres at one time. And the reason we're zoning it all right now, rather than doing it in smaller phases, is because, as noted before, there's so much infrastructure that has to come for this development. We have to get the water here, we have to get the sewer here. And to do that in small pieces, it's just not economically viable. We've had discussions with Mr. Boukart about, I know over the years, he had looked at potentially parceling off pieces of this to smaller developers. And it just, it just doesn't work because of the heavy lift that you have to make to get this project moving forward. So we appreciate your time and consideration and we hope that you will support the application with the staff's conditions as amended with our red lines. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. How much time, how many written comments do we have?
We have two.
And how much time is left?
Three minutes.
Why don't you go ahead and read what you can?
Okay, the first one is from Robert Vince, I'm sorry, Rob Vince with Valley Creek Farm. I hope this note finds you well. I regret that I am unable to attend the July 10th planning meeting due to previous commitments. I wanted to share my perspective on the upcoming proposed rezoning. For nearly a decade, I along with other colleagues have leased approximately 7,000 acres from Carl Boukart that spans from Rivertown Road to South Fulton Parkway. Throughout the years, Carl and his team have consistently demonstrated respect for our employment, enjoyment of the property, willing to agree on all improvements of the land and particularly access roads, green space improvements and working collaboratively with the city to ensure compliance with local ordinances, requests to enter the property all along while being good stewards of the property by keeping it clean, maintaining the infrastructure and respecting the rural integrity that the city, that Chat Hills so special, makes it so special. In 2017, I purchased a small farm from the Smith family, a name deeply rooted in Chat Hills. My intention from the beginning was to improve the land while embracing the values that make the area so unique. I hope my efforts have reflected as much. While I support thoughtfully progress in our community and admittedly do not yet have full clarity on the development company's plan regarding the mixed-use Hamlet zoning code, I want to clearly express my personal endorsement of Carl and Suzanne Boukart. In my experience, they have demonstrated to enhance the land for community benefit. They are currently building a beautiful home on Hamilton Redwine and cannot imagine they would engage in or endorse a mixed-use plan that would be detrimental to the quality of life and surroundings that would negatively impact the area. If anyone should be concerned about the proposed rezoning plans and the future development of the subject area, I think I would be concerned as most. So I am for change. If in fact it positively improves and impact our community with respect to green space, traffic controls and carefully planned infrastructures with implied covenants enforcing as much, which I believe would support. Thank you.
Is there time for the second written comments?
Not really.
Okay, thank you. We'll enter those into the record, both of those written comments. And at this point, I'm going to close the public comment period. The public comment period is closed. We're going to move into discussion amongst the commission member. But first, I think, Mr. Morton, we need to have staff recommendation on this.
Great. Staff recommendation is for approval with the recommended conditions as shown with the amendment.
We'll talk through the conditions here in a minute. I think to begin the discussion, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the rezoning proposal.
And this is for purposes of discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion for approval.
All right, there's been a motion and a second and we will now move into discussion of the proposed rezoning. Lori, do you want to start?
I'm sure. So we talked about several concerns during the work session. Mike and I asked for a couple of conditions. Do I need to go through those again or?
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? So the motion was?
To approve in the second, now we're into discussion.
To approve, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
And did you get that Christine seconded?
Yeah, it should be with condition. I guess they get amended.
Would you like to start with the, have Mike discuss the condition?
Oh, I'm sorry. To clarify that motion to approve the rezoning proposal with the written conditions? Is that a good way to say it?
It's conditional.
With conditional approval. And you want to second that again?
I'll second it.
Sorry about that.
So we can go right to that or perhaps if you'd like, Mike, would you want to walk through the condition? I think it might be helpful if we did that. And I think your question was whether there were additional ones. That was your question.
Do you probably need to talk to? Do you want to go through all the conditions? I could summarize maybe some of them.
I think summarize some of them.
Okay, we have nine pages worth.
Right.
Okay, the first one deals with the density. Basically, I'm explaining what the zoning allows, a 700, I'm sorry, 7,848 baseline, additional available through TDRs. Second condition refers to the non-residential. The minimum and maximum expresses it in square feet. Minimum square feet of non-residential that would be required is 313,930. And the maximum non-residential footprint, we regulate the minimums and maximums differently because they are there for different purposes. The maximum would be 588.62 acres of the district for non-residential. Condition them to the site plan. And clarity, clarification here that amenities for residential uses such as clubhouses and recreation facilities do count as non-residential area. That's consistent with what's in the zoning, but it's a clarification. I'm sorry, that was in, that was in two. The condition number three to the site plan also includes an alternative site plan may be approved by majority vote at the city council in accordance with the requirements of the UDC. Number four says the site plans will serve as a concept plan, but it only applies to the east and central planning areas and that further concept plan and DRI approval is required before they move into the west and south areas. Number five talks about requirement for clustering and connectivity relationships among the improvements. Number six, we have a proposed change. It's about housing variety. The original draft, which was something that I had composed, had all sorts of numbers and frankly, it was going to be an administrative nightmare. We have proposed a replacement with more subjective language saying that the housing types and sizes shall be mixed with a fine scale within each planning area to promote diversity of housing as informed by the UDC and as determined by the city's zoning administrator. That allows us, if we see a plan from them, and that would be happening at the preliminary plat level, so it would be when it comes in for your approval. We can determine whether it includes the kinds of, the level of variety of housing types that the city demands. It identifies a variety of housing types and talks about a goal of matching housing types with wages available with the employers in the district. Number seven talks about activity nodes and has a requirement that 70% of them be integrated at a fine scale. So the idea of calling out the 70%, we have some metrics in how they get mixed. But for example, a shopping area that includes a grocery store, it might be hard to meet those numbers. Or you might want to have a corner store where that kind of stands alone. Or they might have amenities that are those non-residential uses, but they're not mixed with other uses. So that's why it doesn't say 100%, only 70% would be required to meet these sort of mixture requirements. And it goes into a little bit of detail about there can be some single-use buildings, but you've got to have other uses and it applies to some numbers there, a little bit in the weeds. And again, alternative standards may be approved by a majority vote at the city council in accordance with the UDC when such standards are shown to deliver, there's another typo in there, are shown to deliver equivalent or superior integration of uses and place-making outcome. So we have numbers, but if they come and say, listen, we're having trouble meeting this number, but we've got this idea that we think is going to have the same sort of positive outcome. If city council agrees, the city council can approve that without a zoning modification. Number eight, all mixed-use nodes, amenity areas, non-residential areas and recreational and common areas shall be accessible via roadways, easements, sidewalks, trails, et cetera, which will be developed as the district phases are developed. Such connectivity to a previous adjoining phase shall be achieved before the issuance of building permits on the first 20% of residential lots in the current phase. There's additional clarifying language there you see in blue, which says the phases for this condition eight shall be determined based on the subdivision plating approved with the district, meaning as the plats come in, that's what defines what's a different phase. And then the 20% of that new one is where you have to start having actual connections to the old one. And then the 20% of that new one is where you have to start having actual connections to the old one. Talks about the requirement for property owners association, which is also in the code, and the city having a right to inspect some of the infrastructure to ensure ongoing maintenance. Mixed-use concurrency, we include a first set of numbers in the zoning, and the zoning says that any, or the UDC, I should say, says that anything, any development over 500 acres will have more, more levels in the condition. So the first one you see in each list is in the zoning, and then we've added additional levels. So no more than a certain number of residential units may be issued a CO until a certain number of gross square feet of non-residential uses are issued a CO. You see how those go down. We've got some changes to those numbers, which are frankly, just more practical. The top end is at 7,000 houses and the 313, 913, which is the zoning minimum. So they would have to meet that zoning minimum by the time they've got seven houses, 7,000 houses in there. You heard their plan is to provide much more than that. It'll all be determined by the market, and the market is better for these non-residential uses after you have a bunch of residences, customers for those businesses. So their ability to do that non-residential development improves as they do the residential development. And then the other one is the reverse, just ensuring that not too much non-residential is built before you have some residential. First one is again from the UDC, 40,000 square feet and 25 units. We express the rest of them as number of lots. If a big user came in and the city council wanted to approve a change in the concept plan to accommodate the big user, we didn't want this to stand in the way if they hadn't yet issued COs on the houses that will inevitably be demanded for the employees and customers of that big user. And so we just said that they need to have the lots in place. Doesn't mean the houses have to be finished. There just might have been an issue with the timing there. So those next two tranches, there are only two, are expressed in terms of lots platted. And then it says, the owner shall identify and reserve locations within the district to accommodate a minimum of 640,000 square feet of non-residential floor area, including locations along Hamilton-Fairburn Road and South Fulton Parkway. Again, that ensures that as that demand develops, they will have the space available for those non-residential uses.
Mike, the next section, section 10, is very important, but it's very extensive. And it has to do dedications to the city for trails and other purposes. And rather than go through every one of these, I would recommend to people that they take a look at this and any general comment you want to make, but it's, it looks like it's consistent with the Riverlands plan and very much intended to be. And anyway, I don't mean to show you, talk about it any way you want, but I'm not sure we need to go through the whole thing.
I'll just go through kind of the categories. The first section is trails. We talk a lot about connectivity within the district. We talked about the connection to other things outside, city parks. We talk a lot about the Riverlands Trail. There is one change in here. We had talked about requiring the preferred standards from the Riverlands Design Guidelines. The Riverland Design Guidelines has a broad variety of paving materials and arrangements of the path. And we just thought we wanted to accommodate the variety that might be natural for the various contexts along a whole 10-mile stretch. So we took out that preferred, which would have limited it to a particular style, the whole, the whole distance, which could have gotten me on this. In any case, yeah, this section, there are 11 points under the Riverlands Trail requiring dedication of the land, construction of the trail, timing for construction of the trail. It also includes, as I mentioned earlier, river access, dedication to the city for river access, connectivity points at the ends of the trail, connectivity in Hamilton. And so you get, you get, you get the idea. The bottom line, though, is that that 10-mile trail is required to be done by the time they're finished with the construction in those first two major planning areas. So it'll be done before they move on to south and west. So.
And it's made obvious, it's open to the public.
That's correct. That's correct. Public access to those Riverland projects. As I mentioned here of the Upper Wooton Road Trail, there may be a desire to realign where Upper Wooton Road goes through there. And so the requirement, though, is that a trail remain connecting those two parts and that the majority of it remain sort of buffered from the development, so it doesn't all go through. It's okay if it dips in and out of the development, of the neighborhoods or the commercial areas there, but that the majority of it remain green. And finally, oh, the trail connection to Cochrane Mill Park. We did specify throughout 14-foot wide trail, which was what the Trust for Public Lands, the Riverlands folks talked to us about requiring when they mentioned the preferred standards. And so we were specific about the trail width. The minimum would have been 12 feet, and the Riverlands folks were specific that they didn't want it minimum. They wanted that standard width. Two public river access locations, I mentioned those. And also, the last letter under the dedication is, project shall include areas reserved for fire station, police precincts, emergency services, and school uses. The development agreement between the owner and the city shall address the scope, timing, conditions associated with the reservation and dedication to these areas. So there's still a development agreement to come, and that will, that will have the details.
So Mike, there are several more pages of conditions. And I think maybe highlights in there are that the requirements of the DRI study and the requirements including the traffic study, that those are incorporated by reference here, correct?
That's correct.
So I think from a high level, I don't know if that satisfies everyone. I think so. If there are other particular issues, and so I'm going to, thank you, Mike. And if anybody wants more detail, by all means, speak up on the conditions. But it's my understanding that these conditions, as they're presented, are acceptable to you and to the applicant. Is that correct?
I believe so. Yes.
So what we have in front of us are, would be acceptable to this, to you and to, okay, all right. Lori, let's come back to you now.
Okay. I had another question that might solve some of my other questions, Mike. I'm not exactly sure how this works when a proposal, a proposed application is submitted and say it's approved. Does a UDC at that time carry along with it throughout the rest of its life?
That's correct.
So then, a couple of things that I had a concern about as far as their access to the gravel or small roads on Kite Road and Garrett's Ferry Road. That will be carried over in the UDC, and when you guys get around to it 30 years from now and doing Phase 9, that's up to the planning, to that future city council or the comp plan if there's going to be any change. So I'm okay with not adding that condition, is what I'm saying. Let me just go, a couple other things we said. We already talked about adding access to the cemeteries, and they've already agreed to that. Yeah, and.
Is that in the condition? Is access?
Access to the semi, it wasn't listed.
Yeah, it's toward the back. Let me, I'll go ahead and read it. It's a short one.
Yeah.
Did hear it say that it's also in the code as well, that access would have to be.
There, I can, I can look for the cemetery language in the code. So the cemetery language in the condition says, adequate measures will be taken to protect and preserve any cemeteries located on or within the project boundaries. But it doesn't mention access as written.
And by the state law, access is a touchy thing, but we would like to request at least, and we've talked about that, access particularly to the family cemetery on Woodruff and Campbellton Redwine, which may or may not eventually be covered by the, anyway.
With something like.
Something, and provide reasonable access.
Access to descendants.
I think, but isn't, isn't that already the language is reasonable access? And Lori, are you asking for something, not necessarily unreasonable, but just more than reasonable, like, like year-round and unlimited or anything like that?
So my primary concern was one specific place which may be closed or lose total access once the reservoir is, if it's ever built. That would, may limit access to that one cemetery, that Tanner Terry Cemetery. Because as long as we've known Bucart's property, they've always allowed access to every cemetery there, even given us.
So something like that, perhaps Mike can supplement that?
Could you, could you restate? Yeah, I have, so just tack on to the end of sentence and provide reasonable access?
Yes. That's fine with me.
Okay.
That's all I had. Are we going to go back around for one final comment?
We're going to talk, folks.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about your inclinations about this?
Yes, I do want to say just a few words about this, like, and I'm not going to get emotional, but wow. So having been around through the incorporation effort, and before that with the Fulton County 2025 and the efforts to have an overlay here, and the thoughtfulness of these type of developments in how they really can preserve our community. At first, I thought maybe just the village would be better, but now that I've seen this plan and I see the stretch out over it of the open space and preserved space, and thank you applicant and property owner for giving me a tour. I've seen places I've never seen. And when Mr. Bucart said his first property was a purchase from the Carmichael Lake, that's a place I've always heard about, and we have it in our little history, you know, with a little ticket to go fishing at Carmichael Lake. And I thought, I wonder if these legacy property owners who sold all this, all these 8,000 acres to Carl Bucart, if they might just smile a little bit, if they could come back on this property and seeing how it's permanently preserved and now will have access to the river, to everyone in this community. I, I think someone summed it up for me when they said, if not this, what? We've planned for this since day one. And for every five years since then, when we review the comprehensive plan, the council has approved, yes, this is still our vision. It's a big change, but I think it's the best change we can go with out of all the possibilities we see around us. And if we need proof, we can look at Saranby. It's like prying teeth to get those people to come out of the community. They love it so much. They're in their golf carts, and then the people outside of Saranby go in and visit. So I think the proof is in the pudding that these walkable communities do reduce infrastructure. When you give people what they want, where they live, and then they can work and play there, that's probably where they're going to stay. So I don't even know if current traffic studies can take these kind of developments in, into consideration because they're so new. And from what I've heard, nobody else is doing this or doing it as well as we are. So I'm very pleased and very grateful that this is, this plan is finally coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. This is a discussion. If, as we're going through it, if you have questions for anyone, please here or the applicant, please speak up. Christine?
Yeah, I have two questions before my comment. One is for BMB. Based on like concerns spoken. As a developer, what are your thoughts and consistency with things like geothermal, Earthcraft-created homes, solar EV charging stations? Like, you know, we're protecting the green space, but as a development, what do they also do to protect the environment?
Well, I drive an EV, and so I know all about charging. We develop in California, so you might imagine that I've seen it all. And, you know, the wind in, the wind turbines in Palm Springs, just all of the, I mean, California mandates solar on every rooftop, so we have a lot of experience with solar. And yes, we want to do what's responsible in terms of sustainability, and it's different every place. Not every place has the resources to allow us to do it in a big way. But every commercial center should have charging stations, most certainly. And so that's the beauty of having a great team because we have access to all of the experts to tell us what's right for this area. And instead of trying to bring California here, we do not want to do that to you. But we want to do what's responsible for this area. Did that help?
Yes, thank you. And then Carl, my question for you, for the horse crowd. What is the plan and the way to protect what you currently have for the equestrian community? And how does you keep that from dissipating?
Yeah, well, obviously, there is no final plans yet, but believe me, there is nobody more interested and passionate about the horse competitions than me. So I'm going to try to figure out a way to relocate the horse competition venue to another part of the property if it turns out to be necessary. And so we're working on that. It's obviously a huge commitment, but I get an enormous amount of pleasure out of it myself. It's one of the ways that I want to give back to society. And the equestrian community has been extremely, extremely appreciative of everything we've done. And we just get an enormous, Suzanne and I get an enormous amount of pleasure out of seeing that many people benefit from our beautiful property.
Someone used and brought up the word intention, and I've sat up here for three years, and by far, this has been the most intentionally created plan. It's on. Hello. I appreciate the intention that's been put into this, and in the three years I've sat here, it is by far the most thorough, thought-out, intensive plan that I've seen. So I have appreciated being in the presentation.
Mr. Duncan?
Sure. Got some questions? You know, I think I was surprised when I saw the application. It was the first time I'd heard that it was going to be a hamlet and not a village. And, you know, I'm of two minds about the density that a village could bring. So my initial reaction was, was positive to seeing hamlet. But a part of the reason why I asked that question during the work session, but the more I looked at it, and even the application itself is referred to as a collection of hamlets, not, you know, a hamlet, but they're coming in as a hamlet. And when I look at the site plan, you know, it's not a, the boundary itself is not clustered, right? I mean, it is a sprawling boundary. And I, I just worry about the, the scale of it coming in as a single hamlet, particularly when it appears that each one of these phases could be its own little hamlet, right? I mean, not, not just the east planning area, the very first phase one is, you know, 500 units, 500 acres is a, you know, pretty decent-sized little hamlet. So I do, I do worry about the the risk to the city to do, do this all at once. And, you know, would just kind of welcome any, any input, Mike, you might have or Ron on the suitability of this site as being all one hamlet as opposed to separately done individual hamlets, a collection of hamlets as stated in the material.
So what we heard earlier from the applicant about their ability to look long-term and know know what their investment actually means to them, right? When they bring infrastructure in or they're doing things like building the trail. It's a lot of money, right? And they are, I think, willing to do some of those things because they know they will have the project and the returns from the project over its full scope. So it does allow them to make a greater investment in that infrastructure in order to do that. From the city's standpoint, we know we can lock up a certain number of protected acres from the beginning. And we also have the ability to re-review the project, right? We know that they don't have all of their approvals on the later phases. Now our, the scope of the way we can change our view is limited, right? But we can also, as they would be accommodating the market in coming in with whatever changes, they, if. if they propose any changes over time, um, we can also, also look at it the same way. Again, they have certain rights that come with the rezoning, but I don't want to overstate. I don't want to overstate that, but we will have, have a hand in how those plans will look in 20, 30, 40 years as, as they start to come out of the ground. So we have a better look at it. We have better control of it this way than we would if we didn't act at all right now, right? Because it could be sold off to somebody else. Who knows? Politics might change in the meantime, right? And all of a sudden, no preservation is required at all. There are things that, there are benefits to acting now, I think. So that's, that's my perspective on it. We also know that they could come back. We keep talking about the village. Don't know how likely it is. We know that demand will change over time. We know that demand for commercial will increase as there are more residents in the city. There's always the chance that they would want to seek a rezoning of some of that Hamlet property to Village later to accommodate maybe a particular use or just because they see that the demand models have changed. And that would of course then drive additional preservation outside if they did that. But that would be a political call at the time. So this does not foreclose that necessarily. It makes it less likely, maybe, but it, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean it can't happen. So my view, Ron, did you add it?
Um, well, I'll piggyback on that a little bit. And Mike, maybe you can pour some additional insight into this. Because of the size of this and it is like, it's really like multiple Hamlets. And uh, you know, one of the concerns in the community that's often stated is, you know, with regards to Serenby even. You know, you hear it said, you know, at what point does this become a village, right? Because you, you think in a very linear term and you think, oh, well, you're just adding all these you know, projects together. And so now it must equal a village, but really by definition, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, it's, it's really about the, the ratio of development to preservation that defines the difference between the Hamlet and the Village, right? So obviously Village is much, much more dense, lot more construction, right? And, and the offsite preservation. And so if we zone this Hamlet, it's going to stay at that 30, 70 ratio, right? And so that, that could be beneficial in that sense where i- if it was a village, we, we would have a monstrosity of development that we can, you know, maximize every little bit of the property really, uh, in lieu of like preservation outside, right? Am I, am I kind of summing that up correctly?
That's right. The definition of what's inside and what's outside might change though, right? If they were applying for a village, might be on a smaller footprint where they would then be able, outside might still be their own property. Part of that 8,000 acres, right? If they rezoned an 8,000 acre Hamlet, the minimum requirements would be, would be huge. I, I haven't done the, the math. They would probably soak up all the development rights in the city with just the minimum requirements. If that were approved, but I don't imagine they would apply for that, right? Their, their Village, if they were to apply for a Village, would be a, a very discreet area. Not a lot of open space required onsite in a Village, but they have to buy the development rights from outside. So still creates a lot of preservation, basically that same ratio that a, that a Hamlet at a minimum. It can be more because they get additional maximum density goes way up.
So it's kind of like doing a Hamlet on a massive scale.
That's right.
Just like spread out.
That's right.
The city. Um, and that's the reason that Serenby is not a Village is because it's keeping within that, we'll say 200, 250 acre plots at 30, 70 ratio. And that's why even though it's a bunch of Hamlets kind of stacked together, it's not a Village, right? And I'm just stating that for clarification because there's so much confusion around
Right.
Hamlet to Village and at what point does a Hamlet become a Village? Well, it doesn't.
Right. Not automatically, right? There are two different zoning districts, different requirements. Hamlets do their preservation onsite within the boundaries of the zoning district. Villages create preservation outside of the boundaries of the zoning district. They also have different ratios of residential, non-residential. Villages are allowed to do more non-residential than Hamlets are. They can build a little taller, things like that. At least the intensity.
I'll jump in with a comment there. I think the idea of preservation along the Chattahoochee River is pretty I think it's, uh, that's one of the benefits I see. But nonetheless, I don't mean to jump in too much. Charles, do you want to?
Yes, I do have a question for the applicant. Could you guys just briefly discuss the total proposed number of residence, residential units that are proposed for the Hamlet? And the reason why I guess I'm asking that question is because I know that there have been some inconsistencies that have been stated. So could you just, just once again, address your analysis of the total proposed number of residential units?
All right. To clarify all the inconsistencies, I'm going to refer to my notes here. So the, the plan proposes 8,384 dwelling units, which is just over the one unit per acre that's allowed. We arrived at that number because there are some TDRs that Mr. Buchart has from a property he owns on Brazel Road. As well as some from the Bear Creek Reservoir property. So that's where the additional increment is coming from. I believe there was some confusion because during our DRI process, the Atlanta Regional Commission report had a wildly odd number on it, which has been corrected. But I think it caused some confusion. It, I think it said something like 15,000 units, which was not what we were proposing. So it's a total of 8,384.
Where has it been corrected?
It, it has been corrected.
And where can that be seen?
It is published online and it's also been provided to Mike Morton as well.
So if you go to the community, the community development department, you can see it under DRI there.
That's right. The one on our website is the corrected version.
Corrected version, okay.
And, and, and I'll, I'll just point out that number, that was the only place it appeared. All the application documents, everything we've written about, everything else that it said had the, the correct number. And there's nothing ARC can do to force us to rezone at a different density than, than is what is in the application or what city council chooses to do. So the existence of that number is essentially meaningless. It was just an error.
Yeah, they, they aggregated two charts. They took two charts that said the same development and put them together, which is how they came up with the 16,000.
Well, it's good that it's been corrected. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, it's just a comment. Community outreach has been excellent. I mean, and we, we would like to applaud you guys for the community outreach efforts that you have taken. But then we would also like to encourage you, you know, if approved, as this process continues, that you guys will, will continue that community outreach. Meaning, meaning having discussions with the residents regarding traffic, regarding, regarding the building process. So that the community, community can still feel a part of the process. So we would just like to encourage you to continue with that community outreach.
Absolutely. And Mary Alexander and I were actually whispering about that when it was brought up by one of the commenters about wanting to continue the community engagement, not just having the survey. And Mary has confirmed to me that yes, DMB, part of their process is to continue that engagement. So for those that are here, you can expect to have more charades as this moves forward because they do want to build a community that is right for this area.
Thank you.
Reggie.
Just a comment and well, no, you're, you're okay. A comment and a question, my comment being just a thank you. It's a measure of gratitude for the diligence of putting all of this together. It was a, a lot of information to take in, but if I had a question, it was just to document away. So for everything that she provided for us to go through and, and for every, all of the communication and to Charles' point, the, the level of engagement, just thank you for that. It's been, it's been a pleasure to kind of go through all of this and consume it all. So grateful. That being said, this question may be for Mike, but it, it might be for you all as well, but it will see where it goes. I'm looking at the proposed conditions and this question is around more of the affordable housing options in, in the space. And so on the sixth condition, I see where as, as it was refined, we went from being very specific at the beginning, as you mentioned, with a, a lot of numbers here about, about the size of the housing and how that sort of mixed out into the Hamlet. It to being more subjective and a bit more general. And so when we get to the next page here and it talks about that each planning area shall include some units appropriately configured to be attainable by employees working in the district based off the median wages of typical jobs. My question then is, is there a, is there currently a clear percent of how many of those houses would be deemed as affordable based off of how we've defined it here? Or is there a way to define it if and when as this process was to move forward?
That's, that's tough. We struggled with it a little bit. When you start using there are a variety of terms out there, right? That define affordability. Some of them scare people more than others. We thought it was best to try to tie things to the kinds of jobs available, as you can see, obviously. And, and I don't know if you were asking about something more aggressive than that or not. This is fairly loose language. We do have language in the that, the section about the city reviewing and making sure that the things are mixed appropriately. So in that review, we would get a look at, at the affordability. There are not a strong, very specific metrics written in as is. Don't have a great answer.
No, no, I, I get it. I wasn't, I kind of wasn't expecting a great answer, but I, I think you, you addressed to one aspect of it, saying that the opportunity is there to bring that question up again with city council as we, if and when we get to that point. So I guess that's more of a question for the applicant than if you all have a clear picture in mind or a sort of a range in mind. And, and I'm seeing the head nods. Okay. Awesome. More conversation.
Did you want to address the?
Is that, is that something that you all had more of an answer for?
Maybe, maybe you can share experience from other developments. I think that's really hard to say like, oh yeah, we will have houses that cost, you know,
Of course.
300,000 versus up to 3 million. You can't really define that because market changes, but how has it been addressed before?
If I may, if I may toss this one fact out to underlies everything. We allow accessory dwelling units anywhere in the city. That's a good, a good method of affordable housing. And it's it's better than an apartment block of affordable housing, right? In, in a way, right? People have good eyes on the, and you never know how many will be built. So it's not something that's easy to rely strongly on, but it's something that we think about when we think about affordability throughout the city. It's, it's, it's one method. So that kind of underlies it. We still want to hear from you.
Right. So there's a lot of ways to, to deal with this. One thing that you have to realize is not just the price of the house, but the cost of living in the community. And we have to take what we build and divide the cost of operating it among all the houses. So everybody contributes because everybody gets to use it. And so sometimes when you're dealing with that subject of affordability, people do it outside the gates or outside the community, outside the land and do something separate. And then it doesn't really get people into what we're trying to accomplish. But um, but they can afford it because they don't have the assessments that all the owners inside have. And so you know, we got to look at both the costs to live there and the cost to buy there. And there's a lot of programs to help with the cost to buy there. But we, you got to look at the whole picture and decide the solution. So my answer to you is we want to help with what the city's goals are on this. Some cities do projects, affordability projects, and they make it a commitment, especially for the 55 plus communities. You know, because people on fixed incomes, it's hard. And some cities take that on and build places for people and they charge us fees as our part, our share of contributing to that. So that's one answer. The other answer is you find an offsite parcel and build on that so that you don't have to impose assessments. Or the accessory dwelling units can be separately leased or, you know, we have a lot of complex subjects like this to talk about together. So I commit to you, we'll talk about it together. And I know Carl's over there saying yes, that we're all going to talk about it. I wish I had an answer, but there's lots of answers we should study.
Awesome. No, thank you. I think it was less of a specific answer I was looking for in, as, as the theme of the night. I think it was more of a question of intention. So thank you. No further questions from you.
Yeah. All right. Um, like to say, of course, thank you for the, the thorough plan you've put forth. It's pretty fantastic. You know, I struggle with stuff like this because there is this like tear between progress versus preservation, development first preservation. And how can development equal preservation? It's kind of like two opposites, right? And this is like a our, but our zoning does such a great job of trying to compromise those things. And you're doing, in my opinion, a great job of trying to work within it. And albeit I know you were part of making the zoning kind of come to life here, right? You know, as you look at a project like this and it, it looks huge and you kind of break it down into smaller pieces and and you think to yourself like, you know, I love Chattahoochee Hills and I've, I've lived here for 15 years now, you know? I'm raising my kids here. We, we love it. We, we're all in and out throughout the city. And it's interesting because you don't want to see change. But then at the same time, you have to realize that the reason anything is the way it is here in Chattahoochee Hills is because the, the zoning has been working. And and, and this is going to be a, a continuance of that. It is, it is the, the zoning at work. It, the zoning doesn't stop development. It constricts it and forms it so that it's intentional, which has been a word that keeps getting bought up. And, and so I, you know, it, to me, it looks really good. You know, getting lost in the details of like the how we're going to get water and sewer, like those things have to happen. I understand that, like, and, and as developers, like you understand that. I mean, everybody gets that. And that's why you break it down into small phases and, and we do it a little bit at a time. Reggie, I mean, you kind of brought up a, an awesome point too. And I'm, I'm kind of glad that like you, you almost self-imposed like the affordability. To me, that's subjective in a lot of ways, right? Like what I might find affordable, somebody else may not find affordable or you guys would be like, oh yeah, I could buy a million of those, right? Like, and to me, I'm spending all my money, right? So like, there's so much subjectivity in that. And um, but the fact that it's even like on your mind kind of speaks volumes like, and, and so I, I understand you can't give exact language with that because I mean, it's hard to be exact. But the fact that you're thinking about it is, uh, you know, kind of a indication of your character, I think, um, and wanting to like help serve the community. Along the lines of intention, there was a, a verbal commitment. Uh, and I've mentioned this during a couple of our meetings, but a, a kind of a verbal commitment to being intentional about the Campbellton Crossroads District during the work session. I, I think that's, that would be a huge plus because it, it does need a private equity stakeholder to kind of kickstart that project. I, I don't know, would it be too much to add a condition that kind of aligns with that, uh, like maybe some kind of intentionality towards the not, not just the verbal commitment. I, and I kind of get the feeling that you would do that, but is there language that could be added to kind of reinforce that thought pattern? I mean?
Well, let me ask a question. Is there a difference between the current property owner wanting to take that commitment and then the development company? Because I understood it was maybe Carl and Suzanne that were working towards that. In which case it wouldn't necessarily be a condition. be a condition of this development rezoning, right?
Right.
I don't know.
Um, they have some self-interest in having that be a place where uh, there's vibrant, you know, that could be good returns if, if there's a, a good, good business case for it, right? And so making that happen, I think there is, there's a self-interest element um, there. Um, I'm, I was just pondering as you asked a question of how, if we're looking for them to, you know, um, uh, provide a board member for some board to help make it happen or, or some leadership role. Um, I mean, we can offer them that opportunity. It feels difficult. You don't know who it might be, how effective they might be. Uh, it, that, that feels difficult, but a, a, um, some, and that might be a better, better for a development agreement item rather than conditions, right? A, um, an agreement, um, uh, an intention statement in the development agreement and then some, some measure of um, of, of commitment to support over time, whatever, however, however it's fine. Probably better development agreement item than, than conditioned. Would you agree?
Mike, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, it, it's a, um, I, I'm not sure that this is, I think it has to grow organically. Sorry to say that, but I think it has to grow. Uh, and I think we don't know what that's gonna look like right now. And I think that the intention for you to get directly involved with the community and to try to talk with them, find out the community wants and get in that direction and help to guide it. Um, there's gonna need to be funding. There's gonna need to be uh, grants to look at. I, I think, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what form that leadership is gonna take right now, and I think the commitment to it is the important. Right now, so um, I think in the development agreement, that makes a lot of sense.
Can I get a clarification of the, that east planning area where they're showing, you know, non-residential over there in this vicinity? Is that segment of the development within the area identified within the framework, or is it just adjacent to?
It is. It's inside. In fact, some of the, the framework includes land even farther to the west that's proposed for residential development, shown as residential in the framework plan. In fact, the, the, uh, the pond vaults used, um, um, drawings provided by, um, by the, the, the Boukard team at the time, um, uh, in, in that section. Um, and if, for example, it were rezoned as uh, historic crossroads, which is, is the solution that I'd like to see happen, it wouldn't necessarily need to include everything that's included in the framework plan. I would say they could have a shallower boundary, maybe just up to that creek. There's a creek. And then, um, and then the residential will be on the other side of the creek. Residential would happen probably roughly the same whether it's in historic crossroads or hamlet. Not terribly important that that gets, even though the study boundary goes farther. Um, there's no real need for the zoning district, uh, to go that far. I don't know that there's any real benefit to that. But that's why I say we would wanna do this cooperatively, um, whatever solution, do it cooperatively with the applicant, knowing what boundaries work for them. Um, uh, but yeah, so, sorry, very long.
You were standing up to say something. Did you wanna say something? I kind of cut you off there, I'm afraid.
No, you're in executive session. No, I was just gonna say the, the development agreement includes, at least as drafted right now, an intention to um, further the discussions on the historic crossroads, um, implementation. Because it is, requires another public hearing, uh, we, we can't change it to historic crossroads. We can't ask for the variance. We can't do a text amendment as a part of this process. So we didn't think it was appropriate to include it in the conditions, um, but working toward that intention is acceptable to us. And we can include language that says that the owner slash developer will, uh, provide leadership and coordinating efforts to implement the historic crossroads vision, something like that.
Thank you. I, I think that's all I, I had. Uh, it, and it just, just for clarification, uh, number nine, the mixed-use uh, concurrency, that's, that's really just a governor of sorts, right? For the, the balance between residential and, and
Yeah.
Not outbuilding each other, right?
Just supposed to be a backstop, just to make sure that one doesn't get too far out of ahead of the other.
Um, comes to me, uh, we're running quite long here, quite late, so I'll keep my comments pretty simple. I think that, uh, I agree with Mr. Morton's analysis of the standards that we are supposed to consider. It, it's not necessary that they meet every one of them, that it's a balancing that occurs with the standards. And I, I tend to agree with Mr. Borton's assessment that this, uh, application proposal uh, meets those standards, or at least, uh, meets this, the, a majority of them, at least. Um, I'm impressed by the Campbellton, the dedication. The trails are a big thing. I just think it's a big thing. Uh, this is, I, I think Ms. Wilson described it as a new park. And I hadn't thought of that before, but it's kinda what it is. It's kind of a park for the community. Um, and it's an important park. Uh, I, I love, I'm walking along the river is something special. Um, the, the thorough application, the public outreach, I'm, I'm inclined to be, uh, in favor of this proposal. Um, so that's all my comments. Um, is, uh, we have a motion. We have a, a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Uh, we've had our discussion. Unless there's more discussion, which we can be, I would suggest we call the question. Okay. Done all right?
Yeah. So when we called the question, we just had that one little change to that one, right?
Restating. Motion is for conditional approval of the, uh, of the rezoning application. Correct?
That's right. With the conditions with that, and as, as admitted in the, the document and with the addition of that phrase in condition nineteen, adding, um, providing reasonable access to the cemetery.
Um, we've had the motion. We've had it seconded. All those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Get that Diane? Uh, the motion carries. Um, that's the, uh, close of that public hearing. Thank you. We have another public hearing we're going to, and then two more items. So do you wanna take a five-minute break? Let's take a five-minute break. I'll go outside.
Yeah, folks, uh, start our second public hearing. So if you would please, uh, if you don't want, unless you really want some more.
All right, that's, um, the, the second public hearing is open. The previous rules that we read are in order. Um, this is, this is a hearing on the recommendation of an ordinance to revise and amend appendix A, City of Chattahoochee Hills, the UDC, and for all purposes related thereto. Um, I, I think we have one speaker. Is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Nigra. Um, let's just go ahead and open the public comment period. I'm gonna head and open the public comment period. Uh, Mr. Nigra.
Steve Nigra, ninety-seventy, Selborn Lane. Um, I think the, the, the consultants and staff have done a great job of really looking, you know, uh, all the intentions. There's always tweaks that need to be done and, and they've done a good job with all these. Uh, there's one though, I think that I'm very concerned about for, for two major reasons. And that is the, uh, thought of putting any percent, requiring any percent of the land to be put in conservation easement before there is a land disturbance permit. Now, the real issue is, and was held for nineteen years, is the zoning sets the, the non-development percentages at the seventy percent. And we have a lot of approved hamlets that we can feel good about, even though we don't know parcel specific, that seventy percent of that is saved. By putting this layer on at the beginning, we're suggesting that the city doesn't believe that the zoning does the protection. And let's say in a future, one of these projects that's, that's been approved goes bankrupt or what have you. And there was a percent, a future lawyer could argue that the city really didn't recognize that the whole seventy percent was really protected. It was an intention because they came back and put this other layer on to mean it really is. Now, I was in the room when we wrote these regulations. And we put the conservation requirement in for future HOAs and future city councils that would be years or even decades post the completion to where they would kinda forget or wouldn't be as concerned of what we are today. It was never intended to be during active development when the eyes of the city are on that development and what's going on. So that's the number one concern, is it really, an unintended consequence, this could be unraveling what we have put in place so diligently with the University of Georgia's Law Department and everyone looking at this to make sure it was iron tight. The second thing is this requirement doesn't give the city anything they don't already have in protection. However, it's a real complication for the developer. While we ideally would like to know everything, many times there's rock that all the surveys didn't show. There's underground streams that didn't show up that are new. In fact, I, I, we, we just had one. You know, I, I've owned the property for over thirty years and we have a new underground stream. I don't know if it's all that, 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 um, so I think that's a problem on two areas that, that we really need to consider. To unravel it is, once it's there, if there's a driveway or something we have to change, to then go in and, and have to redo it and untangle it from a conservation easement is not only costly, but very timely.
Thank you, sir. That ends the public comment period. Uh, Mr. Morton, would you give us your staff recommendation? Uh, you're not, your mic isn't on.
I forgot to push the button. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Of, uh, as recommended by, um, the consultant.
Correct.
Okay. Um, during work session, we talked about the fact that at the city, uh, council or, and combined council commission meeting of last one, there was discussion about increasing, this draft that you're recommending includes nine percent upfront on the issue that Mr. Nigra was just talking about. And there was discussion at the city, uh, combined, uh, the combined meeting to increasing that number up to fifteen percent. But it's absolutely right that the, uh, that, the idea was that that was, would be an action of the city council, uh, as amended by the city council. So, um,
If I, if I may be clear, that, that was the recommendation in here to both. I don't have a problem with Mr. Nigra's suggestion either, to be clear.
Okay. Um, but your recommendation is to approve it. Okay. Um, I, I'm gonna make a mo, unless you would like to discuss it. I'm gonna go ahead.
Discuss it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll discuss it. Um, so I've heard the council, you know, and I, even when I sat on the council, there's just this concern that it's never gonna happen. That the conservation is never gonna happen, or that some developers are somehow cheating the city out of it. Yet I know because you've said time and time again, Mike, anytime you ask, you can show what is in conservation. Every time they submit another, whatever they're doing for a house or whatever, it's, it's calculated. You've got a map. You've got, you've got proof that this is going to be done. Um, their thought was, well, just, let's just ask them to do nine or fifteen percent and they can do the buffers. I think it's, I think it's silly and I think it's unnecessary. And I think at this point, twenty years into the project, to what Mr. Nigra is saying, uh, there's no need to do this. It's, it's, it's not, um, it's not a trust issue anymore. I don't see any benefit to the city if the city's gonna get it anyway. And to the point that this is not supposed to be something done during the active development. So I would not support, um, making that change.
Um, ma- making what change?
Making the change to the UDC to require, uh, uh, nine or fifteen percent development, uh, uh, preservation upfront.
As I've heard it, and it was, uh, particularly pushed by, uh, Councilman Schmidt, was the very thing you mentioned, was the threat of, say, bankruptcy and the city comes out with nothing. And that, uh, in this case, there is, uh, there is actually something right up front in terms of, uh, in terms of preservation. I may, I hate to, uh, restate his arguments because I'll probably get him wrong, but I think that was what part of the concern was. And I thought it was an interesting concern. And the nine percent, since it would amount to on average the buffers, uh, or within the buffer.
Buffers along road frontages.
Yeah, and that, that there would be plenty of flexibility. Um, and since it's not before the land, the land disturb it permit, there's plenty of flexibility to move it around as needed. Um, and so that's kinda the rationale, uh, Lori, that I remember hearing. Um, you had a comment?
The rationale I remember, am I on? Okay, was that oftentimes developers lay out a plan that shows the green space as something desirable, but then later on develop, develop that and push the conservation to the less desirable. So it was almost like a protection of the development that some of the solid land is being saved versus the swamp. So that's what I remember in a conversation.
As I said, I was not sure I was capturing the full, the full thing. I was remembered parts of it. Um, any other thoughts?
Personally, the language doesn't really bother me. I mean, it, and if it, you find a stream, you hit, you hit rock. I mean, that's part of being an entrepreneur, right? Is you, uh, okay, you picked this limb, but now it, uh, it's not gonna work out. You're not gonna quite get, uh, uh, your full thirty percent. So just that much more preservation seems, seems fine to me.
Yeah, I, I found it compelling myself and I'm, I, I'm big on open space and like seeing open space conserved as soon as possible, frankly. But, um, um, I, I don't think it's within our, we can make a recommendation and I don't think it's within our, uh, uh, to, to say we're gonna pass, we're gonna increase something from nine to fifteen percent. I think we'll make a recommendation or not. Um, is there more discussion on this?
So, so, so we're just making a recommendation as far as that percentage. We're just, we're just making a recommendation to city council.
What the consultants have recommended is a nine percent, right? I do wanna state exactly what it is that's recommended. Susan?
It's found on page two. It's in blue. Nine percent of the property that is intended to be protected as open space must be permanently protected according to the requirements of this section prior to the issuance of the initial land disturbance permit.
And I, I understand the nine percent, Mike, you worked with the, the consultants to come up with.
We, yeah, we did some analysis of some of the recent rezonings here in the city and that was, um, that was a rough number.
Right. It was attainable if you preserved the roadway frontages, the buffer along the roadways.
That's right.
And Mike, my question is, so when this comes to a vote, are we just voting on the individual changes? Or I'm not in favor of this, so I have to vote no to the whole UDC?
Yeah. We're gonna, I, I, I don't think the motion's been made yet.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm just asking that question.
So I'll make the motion. Um, I'll make the motion that we approve the, uh, UDC amendments as proposed. Um, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Um, further discussion?
What, uh, it was seconded, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And this is motion to approve, uh, with the
Amendment, the
With the condition.
The entire amendments, UDC, that would include this particular one that we're talking about, as recommended by the
Right. It includes the nine modifications.
And after months and months of work, over a year of work.
But including the nine to the fifteen percent.
No, no.
No, no, no.
Including the nine.
Just the nine.
Just as the documents written before you.
Correct.
I find myself torn with between that nine and fifteen, uh, situation as, uh, somebody who thinks entrepreneurially. Uh, I agree with you, but I like to, you know, have flexibility within the project, like what Steve is saying too. You know, if you find you can't build here and you want, you know, whatever, right? Like you wanna be able to move within that. It sounds to me really like what the city needs is an auditor of sorts to audit projects after or during their build process. Um, you know, to make sure that everything is being preserved accordingly.
Uh, I don't know that that's required. It's really just a question of what the mechanism of preservation. Right now, it is the political process, the rules in place, the administrative process, right? The approvals that they need to seek. Um, and that is sufficient, certainly in the current environment, right? If politics change, uh, city council wants to change the rules, I think that's where the risk comes in. Um, um, where your permanent protection is in place with the conservation easement, e- even if, even if the politics change and the city council no longer wants to, uh, require, uh, the preservation to happen. They wanna go ahead and let people build willy-nilly throughout the city. That's the difference. I, I keep talking, oh, I don't know how often publicly, about this sort of political moment we're in, right? And how And how we have this opportunity to get preservation, we don't know if that's going to be what the city continues to desire forever. While I do invoke that, I think that it's likely that the politics will stay pretty similar for quite a while, because I think that's what attracts people, I think that's what people like. But yeah, you never know, you never know what the political landscape will be in a while.
Well, I also think the 9% was thought of as allowing flexibility, particularly if it's an average buffer kind of requirement of recent rezoning. Go ahead. Okay, I'm done. Anybody else?
No.
All right, well, I'm going to call the question here then. The question, the motion is to approve the amendments to the UDC as proposed by the consultant firm, as we have in our packet. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Yes. Yeah.
Is it possible for there to be a vote with the condition that you all would, would want to write based on the percent?
No, I don't think we need to do that.
Okay, okay.
I don't think we need to do, I think.
I just want anyone to vote not in support because of one element, that's why I was asking.
Well, your proposal is.
Commissioner Serre was asking.
No, what we're talking about is the individual things, you know, so I'm, I'm voting, now I have to vote no on the whole year and a half that we've worked on this.
Well, no, the proposal is, the proposal is as amended, so I think not. I think, I think we're going to have to vote on the whole proposal, the UDC. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have new business. This is the recommendation on a proposed concept plan for the Tara School Hidden Library, and currently with that, the approval of the proposed preliminary plat because of the same. Mike, do you want to talk about this a little bit? I mean, I think it's pretty clear in the.
Yeah, I'll talk about it briefly, of course. So what's being proposed is approval of the preliminary plat, which is the authority you have. It has to be consistent with the concept plan, so your approval of the preliminary plat would also come along with a recommendation on the concept plan, and it would have to be conditioned on the approval of that concept plan in order to happen in this one step process. So you would, you would vote on a recommendation of the concept plan and a approval conditional on the preliminary plat, conditional on a city council approval of the concept plan. Yeah, it's a single lot clustered together with school and the pool. The uses on the lot are a recreation field and the library, and it's just located right behind the Tara School. They do have work to do to make sure that they will be allowed to build it, based on fire department access. I understand from the fire chief that there was something else that they had talked about doing a greenhouse on the school property that they actually ended up not doing because of the access requirement in place, though it's still a problem they would have to solve for this use. And that will be determined by the fire marshal at the building permitting stage, and if they don't do that, then they wouldn't get their building permit, but this lot would hold those, these two sort of civic uses, it would be able to count as civic space in their 65, 35 ratio.
So the Tara School is unsuccessful, and very successful. I understand there were 250 students now at the Tara School, and schools need libraries. I'm, I'm by myself, I wish it were a bigger library, but that's neither here nor there. I think getting a library is an important thing personally. Steve, you're welcome to say something about it if you'd like, but maybe there are questions or anything by anybody? Yes, Will?
It's one acre, right? The application.
I think, I think it says .99, I think, right?
Yeah, but roughly an acre.
Yeah.
So I, I am kind of hung up on this no bathroom thing and being about 100 yards from the school, so if it's later determined that bathrooms are required, is it possible that the lot itself would have to be replanted in order to meet that need, or is there a way to meet that need with?
They, they could run water across a field conceivably. The building code has a distance requirement for bathrooms, I think it's 500 feet, I measured, not, I mean, that's again.
That's right, yeah. Not that stage, but yeah.
And so the school is close enough, I didn't look at anything else. So yes, bathrooms are a potential issue. I think that, based on the way I've looked at it, they already meet that requirement, but it's potentially a problem they would have to solve, but there wouldn't be anything from the city's perspective that would prevent them from running water to the building.
And that wouldn't require a change to the plat is really.
And something else to consider, if you look at the school's master plan, the high school is going to be within 20 feet of library.
Right. Is it an actual hidden library, like?
It's, it is into the, into the earth, so if you can imagine, there's two of the back walls were actually into the earth.
Okay. Is the roof going to have grass?
And so I, I'm not, I, I'm not sure if it has grass, but it, it's just going to absolutely blend into the woods.
I was thinking of Scotland and the hills, you'll see things built into.
That's right. That's right. So, I mean, it's, they have to raise money for all this, and, and, and there has been a donation that will build it on its current plan and designs. So if we start meddling with that, you know, then that's, that's not even the, that, in addition to the issue of the, of the land plan, you know, it changes all things, but it, it meets all the requirements that we, that access distance, they've measured the distance from the fire hydrant that's right there, so it, it, it meets all those things.
Any other questions for Mr. Nygren?
Well, just, water and sewer could go across the field, I mean, just wasted, they don't have to build a septic field, in other words, in order, if they, that would be, I guess, their option, whether they wanted to handle it that way.
Planting, charging.
Yeah. Yeah, but the high school.
The high school's going to be right there.
It would. Just under one.
Okay. I think.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Well, I.
It will tie to our, our waste, our treatment.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I, during the working session, my question about access for urgency, I think it was answered. I don't have any notes.
Say something.
Did it?
Yes, sir. Go for it.
Thank you, Steve.
The emergency road access is not present. International Fire Code adopted in the state minimum fire standards. It has to be within 150 feet of the most distant point of the structure. So we, we do not have adequate emergency access. Secondly, the closest hydrant is more than 400 feet. For International Fire Code, Section 507.5.1, where there is a facility or building used or created hereafter, meaning beyond its initial construction, there has to be a hydrant within 400 feet of that structure's most distant point, and that is not currently the case.
School.
Directly in front of it, on cell, on Palmville Road.
And that's.
But directly there.
And further than 400.
It is adequate to serve the current facility needs.
But not for the.
But not when the structure is added further, further out. That is, that is, that is our evaluation. If something in the planning has changed, we are not aware of that.
So what about when the high school is there, then that, would, would that be close enough?
I, I can't really speak to it with respect to the plat and the exact location of the high school. The expectation is this, a school and a library in the new code are, are both considered places of public assembly, correct?
Look, we, there's, we don't want any question about this, so what, what do you have there, Mike?
Yeah. I'm not aware of that, that hydrant. My suggestion, in thinking how this would work, is sort of like fashioning a condition, obviously, that it has to meet fire code.
It asked, and Mike, what's the process for them getting a building?
All commercial or non-residential, non.
Chief, you can stay there.
Non-agricultural buildings will be reviewed by the fire marshal, so the fire marshal would get a look at it before the permits.
We have not yet fully reviewed these plans, so.
We don't have plans.
We don't have plans.
Not that stage.
We haven't even really seen the plat.
So when, when are they going to see?
When they submit a building permit?
Right. So you're going to, and you're going to have to pass.
That's correct. It is, it is a.
Absolutely.
Absolute condition.
If there are problems with urgency access, problems with distance to a hydrant, you're going to have to do what you have to do.
And it, and if it's, if it's at that, if, if that exists, that hydrant exists, and I don't want to say that it doesn't, if Steve says it's there, I want to believe that it's there, because I want to believe that what we need is where it needs, where it should be, but if it's there, it shouldn't be a problem. You of course know that when that facility is tied in, and because it's a place of public assembly, according to the new adopted appendices in the state code, it would be a sprinkler facility as well. So water will come off of that main to sprinkler that facility.
And, and Mike, when, where would that be brought? Where would that be?
That's also the building permit.
As part of the building. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. I'm not sure this is, I'm sure it's due addition, because they've got to comply with the code, and they certainly have to comply with fire regulations. Absolutely. Oh, sorry, I, I apologize, I'm starting to fade. Yeah, I, I think that's the right answer, I think those are really important concerns, it's got to be safe.
They are.
But I think it comes at the building permit stage, and I don't think it needs to be a condition, because no matter what we say, it's got to comply, one way or another, and I'd almost not want to say anything more, but you have to comply with the code, but I don't think that's much of a condition.
If you wanted to say it didn't have to comply, you can't.
I know.
But I, I think if we're making recommendations to the council that somehow or another, this needs to be voiced, so maybe you're the one to voice it, I would pass it with that, but just not.
Right.
I wouldn't feel like we did our job if we said, yeah, we approved this and not tell them that, oh, by the way.
Right, right.
During the building part, they got to have this done.
I could put more detail in the memo about the potential problems they have to solve as far as.
That'd be great.
Access, water, sprinkling, bathrooms, and, and I don't, again, I don't think the bathrooms are an issue, but the, certainly fire apparatus, the vehicle access is something. We know something's going to have to happen with that, and maybe water, we'll see if they're not thinking about the hydrant, we'll see if it's being maintained properly, right? Those sorts of things, so, yeah, yeah, but I can bring up some of the things that will come up in the review.
So Mike, just so we're clear, because it takes a little work, it absolutely allows concurrent approval of the concept plan and the preliminary plat.
That's correct.
But it has to be contingent on.
On the city council's approval of the concept plan.
The preliminary plat approval.
That's correct. So you're making a recommendation on the concept plan, which is technically the earlier step in the process, right?
It's.
Right? But, but we specifically allowed that to happen, so it doesn't take two months of planning commission action.
Why don't you state what opposed motion would be?
So it's two things, you can state them in the same motion or not, because we're talking about the concept plan, which you make a recommendation on, you're talking about the preliminary plat, which you make the final decision on.
I'll see if we can do it in one motion.
Okay, one motion, so I would include, concept plan is at the earlier phase, so recommendation for approval of the concept plan, and a vote to approve the preliminary plat contingent on city council, or condition on, city council's approval of the concept plan.
Diane, did you get that? That sounds right to me.
So moved.
Would someone like to make that motion? Like, just as you said?
He did. Will did. Will did.
Okay.
I didn't regret it.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Well, we have time, we have staff reports, and I would say, let's postpone, let's forego the staff reports, if I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Meeting's adjourned.